Good evening. The regular meeting of the Board of Education of the San Francisco Unified School District for June 25th, 2024 is now called to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Steele.
Thank you, Vice President Alexander. Commissioner Bogus.
Present.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Lamb. Commissioner Sanchez.
Here.
Vice, our Commissioner Weissman Ward.
Here.
Vice President Alexander.
Here.
President Matomadi.
So just to note, for the public, President Matomadi is participating virtually. So I will be chairing the meeting in person in her absence. Childcare will be provided tonight from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. for children ages three to 10. The childcare is just across the hall in the enrollment center here on the first floor. And public comment this evening will be heard under Section E, which includes public comment for agenda and non-agenda items. The new protocols for public comment are on our website, sfusd.edu, under Board of Education, Public Comment Protocols. And I'll speak more about that when we get to that point in the agenda. At this time, before the board goes into closed session, I will call, I'd like to call for any speakers to close session items listed on the agenda. There will be a total of five minutes for speakers to close session items.
Thank you, Vice President Alexander. Do you care to speak for closed session items? You have a big chance. All right. None in person, Vice President.
For our virtual participant, if you'd like to speak to any items on the closed session, please raise your hand. Seeing no virtual participants for closed session, public comment.
Thank you. All right. Please note that the board will take a roll call vote on the recommended student expulsions when we reconvene to open session. And I now recess this meeting at 5:02 p.m.
SFUSD will provide closed captioning and American Sign Language ASL interpreter services throughout today's board meeting. Live transcription can be found here, Attendees who wish to provide public comment to the board and would like an ASL interpreter can use the name and can use the Q and A box in the Zoom app to type their name or handle and list the item or items on the agenda they would like to comment on. The attendee will need to have a functioning camera in order to communicate with the interpreter and the board. When it is the attendee's opportunity to provide public comment, the Zoom hosts will promote the attendee to panelists and able, and enable the attendee's video. Translation, go ahead, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
SFUSD is offering interpretation services in Spanish and Cantonese. If you need interpretation, please dial the following phone number. After dialing, please introduce the PIN number. This message will be repeated in Spanish and Cantonese. Buenos tardes. El Distrito Escolar Unificado de San Francisco ofrece servicios de interpretación en el idioma español. Si necesita interpretación por medio de Google Meet, por favor marque el siguiente número telefónico seguido de la clave de acceso. Uno, tres, uno, nueve, tres, ocho, dos, nueve, seis, siete, seis. Por favor, introduzca la clave. Seis, seis, cinco, nueve, nueve, seis, nueve, siete, seis, seguido de la, de el numeral o tecla gato. Gracias. Cantonese interpreter, please. Thank you.
Guaemansangho. San Francisco联合校区将会为今晚的会议提供中文权利服务的 谢谢
Thank you. That concludes translation services.
Good evening, everyone. I am reconvening this regular meeting of the Board of Education of the San Francisco Unified School District at 6:34 p.m. My name is Matt Alexander. I'm the vice president. And President Matomadi is attending virtually this evening, so I will be presiding. It's great to have so many people here in the audience. If folks do not know, childcare is provided across the hall in the enrollment central, center, excuse me, until 9:00 p.m. for ages, children ages three to 10. Also note that public comment on all items will be heard under Section E tonight, if you're looking at the agenda, which includes both agenda items and non-agenda items. If you'd like to speak in public comment and have not yet done so, please submit a card to Mr. Steele here. If you're a student, please write "student" on your card so that you can go at the beginning. There are new protocols for public comment that we've put on our website, sfusd.edu. And if you go under the Board of Education in the Public Comments section, it explains the process. And please note that there, that part of the process is that we've limited the total time for public comment so that we can begin board business by 8:00 p.m. We recognize that that is challenging and it does put a limit on public comment. The reason for that is there's a tension between wanting to provide as much public comment as possible, which we do, and not having our board business start so late that we're taking votes and making important decisions late in the evening when people can't hear us and watch the meeting. So we're trying to balance that. We know it's not perfect. You know, we've had some good conversations about public comment and how to improve. Also, the balance between in-person and virtual. We are prioritizing in-person public comment right now, but we've heard feedback on that and we're exploring other options as well. But for now, we're going to follow the policies and procedures that are on our website. So we ask your understanding. Another thing that you can do that's really helpful is if you're here with a group, if you don't mind kind of consolidating as much as possible, folks can stand up together, even if one person is speaking or a couple of people are speaking, so we can see the level of support in the room as well. So just thank, we just thank you for your understanding as we, as we work through this. All right. So let me first give the report from closed session and then we will move into the agenda. So from closed session, in the matter of student JF versus SFUSD OAH case number 2024040364, the board by a vote of seven ayes gave the authority to the, of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. In the matter of student AC versus SFUSD OAH case number 2024050669, the board by a vote of seven ayes gives the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. In the matter of student CO versus SFUSD OAH case number 2024050336, the board by a vote of seven ayes gives the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. In the matter of student KAB versus SFUSD OAH case number 2024040579, the board by a vote of seven ayes gives the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. And in the matter of student NZH versus SFUSD OAH case number 2024050216, the board by a vote of seven ayes gives the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. And finally, in the matter of Denham Jackson versus San Francisco Unified School District, San Francisco Superior Court case number CGC 22598157, the board by a vote of seven ayes gives the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. And in five matters of anticipated litigation, the board by a vote of seven ayes gives direction to the general counsel. All right. Now we're going to move to our land acknowledgement. We, the San Francisco Board of Education, acknowledge that we are on the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramatis Aloni, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. As the indigenous stewards of this land and in accordance with their traditions, the Ramatis Aloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. As, as guests, we recognize that we benefit from living and working on their traditional homeland. We wish to pay our respects by acknowledging the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatis community and by affirming their sovereign rights as first peoples. Now we will move to the superintendent's report. Good evening, Dr. Wayne.
Good evening. Sorry. Yeah. Good evening, commissioners. Good evening, members of the SFUSD community. This is our final meeting of the 23, 24 school year. And our students are well into summer as we close out our business this year. And so just have a few announcements. Tonight, we're going to be talking about our resource alignment initiative. Just want to remind everybody, we, we post a lot of information on our website. So if you're interested in learning what we've been doing and what's coming next, please visit us there. And then we have, you know, school, the school year has ended, but we have a lot of summer programs happening. We actually have more students enrolled in summer programs than ever before. One of the programs we're proud to offer is our Summer Migrant Education Program. And this is a program that, the, a program for migrant children to help reduce educational disruption and other problems that result from repeated moves. So we have students from age three to 21 who can be part of the program. And Drawn Together is the curriculum theme for the Summer Migrant Program taking place at Sanchez Elementary. We have teachers and interns are using artists such as Frida Kahlo and Jesús Aguirre in project-based learning modules with 60 students that's serving this summer. So we're excited about that. And on Sunday, June 30th, the cheer for us in the San Francisco Pride Parade had an opportunity to walk with the district, those of us in the district celebrating pride last year. What an inspiration. And we've been, you know, a leader in providing LGBTQ+ services and an inclusive curriculum for nearly 35 years. And we're pleased to be able to participate annually in this parade and share our pride for those of, in our community. We also, I just want to remind everybody, we are offering free summer meals and any San Francisco youth age 18 and under can access breakfast and lunch at no cost at 60 sites, over 60 sites that we have. So you can go online and see where those are to go to a school near you. And then summer enrollment for the 25, 20, 24, 25 school year is happening. So if you are new to the city and haven't done your enrollment, come to the enrollment office and it starts on July 8th. And then we have an open enrollment period as well starting July 15th. And then just a reminder, this summer, we got July 4th coming up. So school sites, our summer programs will be closed and the offices will be closed. And then Monday, August 19th is the first day of instruction. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Wayne. Now we have our agenda item from the CDE Fiscal Advisors' Report. Due to the fact that we recently had the California Department of Education elevate our fiscal oversight. Do we, do we have a report this evening, Superintendent?
So we do have, I believe Elliot and Pam are on and we didn't, yeah. So if they want to share, well, not unless we'd have a prepared report, I don't think. Okay. Because if there's something that's prepared.
We'll, we'll check with Elliot.
Okay.
We have a couple of comments and.
Great. Wonderful.
Texting Pam to see if she did. So just very briefly, I just want to give kudos to staff who have been working diligently on preparing your budget. There is, as you know, a lot of details in it and probably even more because of some CDE requirements and thick mat requirements. So your business staff, and I don't, I think I'll miss people, but Jackie, Sean, her, her staff, Anne Marie Gordon, people in personnel, HR, Amy Bear Sven. I can't even remember everybody, but there have been a lot of people working very hard, you know, just getting everything done due to schedules, which are very difficult. As you know, June's a tough month because you've got to have a preliminary budget and a final budget. And then it has to all be fit into a Saks report. So I just want to say they've been doing a great job. Pam was on and I have been meeting with staff to go over your hiring lists, people being recommended to be hired by the district, your lists of who's needed in the district. And we have a ways to go, but we've made great progress. I think that age, again, same people, HR staff and Amy Bear Sven, Anne Marie Gordon. Who am I missing? Jackie, Candy, just have been great. And I will say it's not easy. It's a new process for them. And it's something that for a lot of school districts even now, you are not alone. 2024 has been a year that have had, you've had to make budget cuts. I do, do want to say leave one cautionary word, and that's that now that it's on paper, some of the hard work begins and planning for the next two year, this year and the next two years, as you'll go over your budget later on, requires the execution of the plan. And not that writing the plan and putting it together and bringing people together hasn't been hard work, but the commitment of the board and staff and the community. And I really hope the community will, will support the district because there's hard work to be done to really fix the budget deficit and get to where the district needs to be to really get the most out of the funding you get. But for right now, I want to thank the superintendent, Dr. Wayne, your cabinet, and all the people involved in putting the budget together and working with us. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Duchan. And now I'm going to turn to my colleague, oh, no, Superintendent Wayne wanted to say something.
No, just appreciate the acknowledgement. And I want to acknowledge, acknowledge the hard work of our CDE advisors working with the team. They literally met for six hours today. We, you've heard them talk about needing details. Want to appreciate our team, as he said, has been putting those together. And it is a matter of going, you know, line by line. But I will say it's been a helpful process to, you know, we don't have, we've talked about how our current systems are limited. So it's taken extra work just to compile this, but it has been really helpful to get a, a very detailed, clear picture of our budget and particularly staffing. So I appreciate the time to go through all of that. And as he said, we have more work to do. We'll be in a room again on Thursday, working this through. And until we are confident in being able to move forward with the right decisions, both to support our schools and maintain fiscal stability.
Thank you. Now I'm going to turn to Commissioner Lamb for a report. We're very grateful for her leadership in sharing the Committee on Fiscal and Operational Health.
Thank you. I want to first recognize the staff in putting the materials in preparation for past Thursday's committee meeting. And this is really, again, thank you to the superintendent for his leadership because what we're doing is setting up this ad hoc committee to preview stabilization plans, the budgeting processes, so that by the time it gets to the full board, it had already had a chance to be vetted through the ad hoc and have those tough discussions and questions that occur. Unfortunately, I missed last Thursday. I was out of sick last Thursday. But I do want to ask Commissioner Weissman Ward to give a summary of the past Thursday's ad hoc committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Lamb. I'll just give a, maybe a 30-second overview of the ad hoc committee. And attendance was myself and President Matomadi and of course, district staff and Superintendent Wayne. It was a really productive meeting. We had an opportunity to revisit and remind ourselves about the collective goals of the ad hoc committee. We had an opportunity to continue to give thanks to staff for their just tireless efforts and pulling together all of these numbers and making sure that we can present a budget that we feel comfortable voting on, a budget that is backed by, by facts and by, by legit numbers. So thank you all for that. And most of the meeting was spent reviewing the Budget Reduction Resolution, which I believe we're going to look at the updated finalized one today, getting some feedback from our CDE advisors. We also discussed the Modified Fiscal Stabilization Plan and had an opportunity to inquire with staff and with CDE, just getting confirmation that, that what is being put forward satisfies and meets the CDE requirements, whether there's any issues that remain unresolved. We had an opportunity to discuss what obstacles our folks are encountering in terms of staff and hoping that folks will continue to work collaboratively and collectively together and not in the typical silos. And then we talked about how we as a board can support this work and how we can work again together to make what needs to happen, happen. And that, that's my summary.
Thank you, Commissioner Weissman Ward. Just in closing, to the public, please note that all of both approved minutes, as well as documentation and presentations are all up on board docs for the ad hoc so that the public can certainly follow the work of the committee and that we're delivering on deliverables. That was why we came together as a committee.
Thank you so much. And, and again, thank you to the members of the committee and the staff for the hard work that's being done on behalf of the entire board. It's really an important service as we move forward in terms of fiscal stability. All right. Now we are, have arrived at public comment. So the order of public comment is going to be students, SFUSD students, who are present here in the room. And then we're going to do agenda items. And then we're going to do non-agenda items. So I believe, my understanding is most folks who've submitted cards are here for agenda items. But if there's non-agenda items, you can submit those too. And this is sort of the last call for speaker cards. So if you haven't got your card in and want to speak, please turn them in. And hopefully we'll have some time at the end for virtual public comment. I can make announcement in a minute as to how things are looking in terms of timing. But let's get started, Mr. Steele, with students, please.
Thank you, Vice President Alexander. I do have some cards here for students. I will call five at a time. Please come line up at the podium, we'll have one minute each. Soshi. Yes. Alex, Palileo, Catherine, Alan, Tao, and Luna.
And, and thank you, students. And before you begin, just for everybody who's giving public comment, there is a timer up here so you can see your time. It counts down from one minute. Please, and it'll beep at the end, but please just wrap up. You know, you can finish your sentence, but please wrap up when the timer goes off so that we can get as many people as possible and hear as many voices as possible. Thank you.
I think you shouldn't separate those schools because then it will go back into segregation. And it will not be fair because you will not give other kids the same chances.
Dear SFUSD, I think it's wrong what you're doing because I read most of the cards that kids said and it said that they feel really sad if their other friends left. And yeah.
Thank you.
As a student, I believe that it'll be hard for me to restart at a brand-new school, to be able to have the same exact experience and being able to like start again and not having the ability to be with most of the people that I know now would be heartbreaking. It would be truly heartbreaking to lose the community that I have met at my school and to have to start all over again. I remember when I was applying for schools that I was afraid that I wouldn't know anyone and that I just wouldn't be able to see the friends that I had in middle school and just to know that I have to start all over again. And just knowing that I haven't really, I, I just feel like it would be really hard. And I feel like I will, just knowing that I won't be able to see the people that I see every day, have the same connections with teachers and staff that I've been able to at June Jordan, I feel like it would be hard for me to just have that same exact experience.
Good evening. I'm Catherine and I go to June Jordan. I'm also a YMAC member and I stand here to take, today to talk about my school because we're one, one of the many that are being affected with the decisions that you guys are making today predicting our future, my future. Our school service is just as good as a big school, except our school opens us with open arms to have a second chance that other big schools don't have. Many of our teachers change our perspective in which we see the world and navigate throughout our journey in high school. Most of us, most of our teachers are leaving because why, you know why? The school budgets are being cut because their jobs were in jeopardy. We, we all can't make decisions about it. You guys can't make decisions about our education without us. It's not okay for you to, to not take input or intake students' input. Our education, education is just as important as saving money for our district.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Alan Tello and I'm a proud student at June Jordan School for Equity. I attended a large middle school when I, where I often felt like just another face in the crowd. I struggled to receive the individualized attention and support I needed to thrive academically and personally. It was disheartening to feel like I was falling through the cracks, unnoticed and unsupported. However, since being at June Jordan, I have found a home, a community that goes beyond the typical definition of a school. At June Jordan, I received the kind of personalized attention and support that has transformed my educational journey. The small class sizes have allowed me to build meaningful relationships with my teachers who not only know my name, but understand my strengths and challenges. This environment has not only boosted my academic performance, but has also nurtured my confidence and sense of belonging. It's not just a school. It's a place where everyone, every student matters and thrives. As a member of the board, you are accountable to us as students. Our voices and perspectives are what matter most in decisions that affect our education and future. I urge you to prioritize the preservation of small schools like June Jordan, which are essential for students like myself who flourish in a, in a supportive, personalized learning environment. I never thought school was for me until I found June Jordan. Now I plan to pursue higher education in a small learning environment because I realize that I am not the problem. The system is.
Thank you. Translation.
Hello. My name is Alex and I'm a student at O'Connell High School. I'm here to let you guys know that you don't know how to really make any research about students like us. For those that we do not speak English, but we all, but rather to speak Spanish, we are, or I feel that I am, my teachers are taking care of me the best way they can. And you are about to interrupt my education. Just like me, there's another student that he couldn't continue. He's studied here, this high school, and then he was being sent back to his country. And we are just asking for you to help us out. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Luna. I go to June Jordan and I'm also a part of YMAC. I'm here today because I want to highlight how much some of the teachers have helped me out here at June Jordan. I chose to go to June Jordan because my sister went there and I wanted to have enough support. Teachers took the time to talk to me, helped me through my test and supported me during my learning. It is unfair for us students to not be engaged in this conversation as this is our education that you're talking about. I want to urge you to weigh the equity criteria more to ensure this process is fair to us. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that, um, is RJ and Alexis here? Or they speak already? RJ and Alexis? All right. Okay, got it.
Good afternoon. My name is RJ and I go to June Jordan. June Jordan impacted, impacted me by giving me a space to grow and a space that gave me people that cared about me and my future. I feel like the district should listen to me as a student because I've experienced both a big school setting and a small school setting. And a small school setting was more beneficial for me as a student and many more students like me. And at a school like June Jordan, I was more than just a number on an attendance list. I had people that genuinely cared about me and my future, sometimes even more than, more than I cared about my own future. That's why I feel like small schools are beneficial for students like me.
Thank you. That concludes our in-person students.
Thank you very much. And thank you to the students. Thank you very much, and thank you to the students speaking tonight. We really appreciate your feedback, as we consider this process moving forward. So, let's go on to agenda items.
We'll do, I'm going to call five at a time again, so if you hear a name, please walk up to the podium right now. Fatima, Luz, Walanca, forgive me if I'm mispronouncing names, Ana Aviles. There's no name on this. It says Parents for Public Schools, but there's no name. Vanessa Moreno, Abel, Estancilau, and Nevia Nathan?
Oh, I start now, okay. Hi, my name is Fatima. I'm an English teacher at June Jordan School for Equity. I just wanted to take a moment to speak on the importance of the school, and the necessity of keeping it as it is, without co-location or merger. I understand the state's categorization of our district and the negative creates a sense of urgency that necessitates immediate action, but I do not believe that the most financially viable option is to close, merge, or co-locate a school like June Jordan. Our student body has been pretty stressed about this, and the possibility of being co-located or included with schools like Burton, which are very big. They did not come to our school for the options you guys claim are only at big schools, they come for the physical and emotional safety, and the teacher-student relationships that make them feel like they exist beyond a physical body in a classroom. This is the need they have, and this is a matter of true equity. Yes, the pro-people expenditure is more, but if the city, county, state does not deem the bodies of our Black and Brown students as human, then this expenditure becomes a necessity. This is equity, giving people what they need, not the same amount as everybody else. I urge you to be more creative in your decision-making as you move forward in this process. Consider the possibility of bringing in another school to bottom two floors of our building, or even consider closing a big school instead of us.
Thank you.
June Jordan being one of the first on the chopping block is racist in classes, and why not be a stand on a district that is already struggling to maintain its clear values of equity?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. As, as, we have a lot of people wanting to speak tonight, so when your time is up, I'm asking you to please stop. Okay, where are they? Next, go ahead, please.
Buenas noches, my name is Luz. I'm a middle school parent in the district. Closing, merging, or co-locating schools is a wrong thing to do. It will destabilize our communities, take away resources, and make hiring qualified teachers a nightmare. Start addressing budget deficits from within, and stay out of our kids' classrooms, and get rid of the limit on public comment. The families are here sacrificing their time, let them speak.
Thank you.
Hello, Superintendent Board of Education. My name is Ana Aviles, and I am a parent leader with Latinx Parent Advisory Committee, and also the DLEC Chair. I also represent the school site council at Daniel Webster Elementary School, ELEC at James Lake Middle School, ELEC at Daniel Webster. So, as you can see, as you can hear, I'm a very active parent. The timeline with the RISI alignment initiative has been rushed, and hasn't really taken into consideration families and student voice. Doing this process during the summertime, in which families are having vacation, trying to take care of themselves, and you're making this move, but families are usually disconnected, and SFUSD work quote-unquote, is doing planning. The data shows that our marginalized community continues to be missing. Online servers with terrible Spanish translation do not speak to equity. I had to email Kim on April 5, 2024, sharing my concerns about the lack of quality Spanish interpretation translation. I then spoke with SFUSD staff, and asked them if they had looked at the survey, and their honest response was, to be honest, I haven't, and I will look at it tonight. I appreciate their honesty, and to speak to how you are being thoughtful quote-unquote, including our community voice before putting our servers, that's already challenging our sex, up because of its online. Make sure to have your native speakers review and survey with a big, big impact on our students and families. And I just want to read this, I know I'm last, but I was able to get this from SFUSD values.
Thank you, that's your time, I'm sorry.
Social justice, we stand with this, who are most impacted by the system of oppression, and actively change those systems within our district. I want you to reflect and tell me what I do want to reflect on this value.
Next, please. There were two students who didn't come up with their first call, so they're going to go now, okay? All right.
Hi, my name is Juan. I am a recent graduate from June Jordan High School, and a YMAC member. I decided to go to June Jordan, because we actually have a real community there. My mom has taught me to be a leader in June Jordan, and sure I was prepared for the world out there. We're the ones getting affected by your decision, and, and it's not fair for you all, for you all to make such an important decision without us. I have a little brother who I want to go to June Jordan, because in there, they helped me become a better person, and provided the one-on-one support I needed. It is no joke for, for you all to be playing with our future and education. Please respond to our email, because in this process, we need to have student input. But, thank you, guys, for listening to.
Right on. Thank you. Your name was Juan? Your name was Juan? Thank you.
I can start? Is it on? Okay. Hi, my name is Jalissa. I go to Burton High School, and I'm also a YMAC member. I'm here today because I wanted to voice my concerns on school closure. First of all, I think it's unfair for schools to close down, and more kids to be forced into the classrooms of other schools, when in an average classroom at my school, has 20 to 25 kids, and our teacher can already, is it, it's extremely hard for them to give one-on-one support to all of us. And forcing more kids into these classrooms is going to make that a hundred percent more worse. And, one second, y'all. It is unfair for you guys to be making all these decisions without us. Just to let y'all know, you guys will not be the ones who go through this, you guys are not living through this anymore. You guys aren't kids, you guys aren't in high school, we are in high school, and we have to face those consequences, not y'all.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Levia. I go to June Jordan, and I'm a YMAC member, and I wanted to highlight that a lot of us don't do good in big schools, and there's a reason why we choose to go to small schools. We don't appreciate, we don't appreciate student impact not being taken care, taken account when talking about our education and our future. And our, our voices do matter, and we are the future, too.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Axel. I go to June Jordan, and I'm also a part of YMAC. I am here today to tell you how the teachers at June Jordan have influenced me to be a better person. Peer resources connected me with YMAC to be able to develop my leadership and stand up for myself in situations like this. My education is being targeted with the input of students. I want to ask for you all to weigh the equity criteria more than any of the other ones, to ensure my future is not being affected by the decisions you take without input from them students.
Thank you.
I'm with Parents for Public Schools of San Francisco, the one and only celebrating over 25 years of serving all families in this city. And we need to talk, because I may be blind, but I can see right through what you're doing. You have spent the last year talking to us about the interim golden guardrails, where we could be talking about this important matter. Instead, we're having to stand up here and speak super fast to tell you, please stop. Please stop and take a look. You could have taken a look two years ago, three years ago, when we were facing budget issues. Can we please push this off? We need to talk. We are watching. Everyone in this room is watching, everyone online, this city is watching, the nation is watching this city to set an example. Please do the right thing, and think of the children.
Thank you. Wonderful.
Good to see you, Justin. Hi, everybody, good evening. My name is Vanessa, I'm the Executive Director of Parents of Public Schools of San Francisco. I hope you can hear me clearly. I encourage you all to look at our website and our Twitter. We did have a couple press releases related to school closures, allocations, and mergers. One of the things I want to just mention tonight is that SFUSD is not the only one in this seat of low enrollment. There are plenty of districts across California in the same seat as you guys, and the nation, and they're not closing schools. So, what I'm going to ask is what I was asking in the press release, we need to address the thick net, we need to make sure that the critical parts of those negatives are addressed. And then, we need to think about strategic equity enrollment, and think of those four approaches, and how we balance schools. It is not incumbent upon SFUSD to balance schools on the backs of the poor, or the working class. So, in this case, what we'll need is a community solution together to get to that place. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to call the next five, please come line up at the podium. Renee Peña, Sarah Wilson, Supria Ray, Randy Markman, and Ava Donjavor. Sorry if I'm mispronouncing.
I'm Renee Peña-Govea. As a teacher at June Jordan School for Equity for the past 12 years, I know that equity means supporting different people differently according to their needs. It does not mean treating everyone equally, as that does not address individual needs. June Jordan's small class sizes guaranteed by this board's own Small Schools by Design policy allow us to provide specialized education to the highest percentage of low-income, disabled, and Black students in our geographic area. More than a dozen of our students are here today in the summer. Can you all stand up, June Jordan students, here on our summer, and events the strength of the relationships in our small, tight-knit community. You referred to pride and pay lip service to equity in many promotional materials. Small communities like June Jordan provide intimacy and sense of belonging to LGBTQ+ and other marginalized students who might get lost in a larger school. We demand you prioritize equity as the primary criterion in your planning. We also have copies of the dozens of letters of support for each of you, and are asking you for a meeting with the Coalition of Small Schools, so we can educate you on why small schools must continue to be an option in an equitable SFUSD.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Wilson. I'm a parent, and I work for SEIU Local 10 to 1, and I'm SEIU's appointee on the District Advisory Committee on Resource Alignment. After months of the DAC meetings, a few things emerged for me. One is that the need to close schools has not been clearly and unequivocally established by the district in the way our families deserve, if school closures are going to happen. District administration actually did admit to the DAC a few times that the money that closing schools would save would not make a substantial difference in terms of closing the district's large budget gap. Secondly, with community input, the resource alignment online surveys for the community were confusing, and gave little opportunity for really meaningful input. And as DAC members pointed out, the demographics of who took the surveys is lopsided and not representative. Third, the reason that equity-related criteria, as you'll see in the presentation later, were ID'd by the DAC, was because there are structural inequities in our district that really should be addressed before shutting down school communities, from lopsided PTA funding to school sites, to a family choice assignment system that exacerbates segregation, to high spending on central office management positions. So, please vote, it'd be great if you all, the actual board members, would vote on the criteria, because, as you know, we're just an advisory committee. So, our students and families deserve this. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This is Supria Ray. Thank you so much for being here tonight, and for everybody else as well who's participating. It's great to see the students and folks being here. I've been working on school advocacy for years now, as, as you folks know, and I just wanted to report on some of what I've been hearing back from the community. One of the themes I keep hearing over and over again is that the community really, really wants an opportunity to have, not just input, but a real sense that the district is focusing on what they want. And I've heard from a lot of people on language pathways, for instance, on location of their schools being extremely important to them, and on the importance of making sure that we are giving our kids a very high-quality education. And I've heard that across the board, from groups throughout San Francisco, that the excellence of the education their kids receive is really important. We need to make sure, if we're going to continue and be stable, that we can keep a reasonable enrollment, and hopefully, reverse our enrollment decline. We need families to want to come, and we don't want to drive them out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Eva. I use they/them pronouns. I represent San Francisco Community School. I'm the parent of an incoming first grader, who has loved her kindergarten year at San Francisco Community School. I'm also a social worker, working in San Francisco, and I've worked in schools, and I know on a personal and professional level, the importance that having the one adult, strong adult in your life can help a child both physically, emotionally, educationally, in so many ways. I really am encouraging you to weigh the equity criteria for what everyone else has said. You know, the, as what Fran said, my daughter, is, please make the schools stay open. If they're closed, they will have to cancel the events. SFC has so many community events, and ways for the children to engage with the neighborhood, in a project-based learning environment, and I hope that her and her sister, who is not in school yet, can continue to attend this school for their education.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brandy Markman. I'm the parent of a middle schooler, also a member of the San Francisco Education Alliance. In October of 2023, our group, members of our group authored a resolution that was passed by the San Francisco Democratic Party, supported by Nancy Pelosi, against school closures and consolidations, without a five-year process. A year is way too short of a time to do any analysis, and I, I was surprised, but not, actually not too surprised, to hear Sarah Wilson say, that you don't have a dollar amount that will be saved from closing public schools. Everyone should Google debunking, debunking the myth of public school closures by the SHOT foundations. There are a lot of costs involved in closing schools, and they are not the moneymaker that many people say they are. And we have seen absolutely no dollars from any of you forecasting that this will be making money. This is why many of us don't, don't trust this process, and so, we ask you, do not close our public schools, especially a year is very rushed. And when you call something resource alignment initiative instead of school closures, that feels really sneaky, and we have a hard time trusting you.
Thank you, Brady. Thank you. All right, calling the next group. Tony Hines, Galen Spoor, Frank Lada, Nancy Lambert Campbell, and Phil Ellis. Please come to the podium.
I am Tony Hines, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm a little frustrated, because I've been to a lot of meetings, and a lot of committees, and it seems like y'all not listening to what the people are saying. People have said, please don't close our schools. Please be intentional about education equity. San Francisco is going on a slippery slope, acting like Texas, and Florida, and other places who historically really don't give a damn about people of color, specifically Black people. There's programs in this district that really work, there's like, the ALI program, the CAC, African-American Parent Advisory Council, the DLEC. There's a lot of things that have been eroded that help families. So, please, when you decide to co-locate schools, merge them, whatever you call them, you're closing the door on all these beautiful children's livelihood in their life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Galen Spoor. I'm here as a parent and president of the Parent Action Council at San Francisco Community School. I am deeply concerned about this threat to small schools potentially closing. I had a whole thing. I'm going to jump to the bottom, though, because we've been talking a lot about money. As everybody has said before, data shows closing, closing and merging schools does more harm than saving money. You must close this funding gap from the top, and within, before coming anywhere near our classrooms. You have superintendents making $200,000 a year to run facilities and other important jobs, but $200,000 a year when you cannot pay, our librarian got checks for zero dollars. Like, y'all paid money to send her blank checks with no, it's incredible. The funding is here, in the city. Tell them and breathe, though, to defund the police, because in no reality does it make sense that 60% of our city's budget goes to cops over education.
Thank you.
Nancy Lambert Campbell, on the behalf of UASF. The UASF Board of Directors demand SFUSD follows through on the hiring of budgeted positions for the 24-25 school year. After months- After months of school planning and budget development, we are now left in limbo as our hiring of assistant principals and support staff is frozen. This spring, our principals worked on reduced budgets with our school site councils, budgets we developed in good faith, working to make the best of what we have. Now we're not allowed to hire for positions that were approved in March. We know what we need to run safe and supportive schools, but now we are being prohibited slash delayed from doing so. We are looking at starting yet another school year understaffed, and for what? To save a few dollars now at the expense of safe and functioning schools. This is not a sound strategy. Many of us have already started the summer with vacancies that will affect the safety of our school, not to mention academic outcomes and student success we are all working towards.
Buenas noches. Good evening, Commissioners, Dr. Wayne. My name is Frank Lada, Executive Vice President of UESF, and I'm speaking here as my official capacity, representing over 6,000 members in the district. So UESF is very happy to see the approval of the agreement between the district and the union on special education. It's these type of agreements that give confidence to families and educators because it shows that we are collaborating and holding ourselves to high expectations. This officially closes UESS's bargaining campaign. As we both know, UESF and SFUSD have been nonstop bargaining ever since we were forced into our homes with COVID. And that means that UESF has more time on its hands now. So just know that. Bargaining has showed us that tough conversations can have great outcomes. With our union contract, the district has everything it needs to attract and retain educators. We know there are some tough conversations to be had next year. The union has and will continue to be transparent in our fogey and demands, as well as relentlessly making sure the district is meeting its commitments to students, educators, and families. The tough decisions you have to make as a board and as a leadership will have an impact on this district for the next decade. It took almost two decades to mismanage it to bring us here. So that is why, as a union, we understand the impact of the work you're doing. And we may not agree on the approach of your framing or the choices that you're making, because we know there is a lot of hurt in this district, a lot of mistrust. But regardless of our disagreements, we think it's important that you maintain your commitment to transparency. Then, at the minimum, we can at least acknowledge that the district is finally doing things different than it did decades ago. So we look forward to that collaboration and continuing to fight for the schools our students deserve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent and School Board members, for giving me the opportunity to give you some background. I'm speaking on the General Consent Item Number Four, a donation from Zern L.K. to the Flynn Elementary School of Bottle Fillers and Filtered Water Processing Equipment. The PTA President, Autumn Brown Garibay, took me on a tour of Flynn Elementary School, and we saw a young girl drinking out of the puddle of a drinking fountain. She wasn't pushing the button getting fresh water, but she was drinking water out of the puddle. When I went back to my car, I called the corporate office in Chicago and asked them, can we make a difference in this school and as a start for San Francisco Public Schools? They said yes, and we've been working with the district over the past six months to make this $14,000 donation of filtered drinking water for the children at Flynn Elementary School. These products are NSF certified to reduce lead to less than five parts per billion.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your donation. Thank you. I have two more speakers for agenda items. I have Autumn Brown and Patrick Wolf.
Good evening. My name is Autumn Brown Garibay. I'm the PTA President at Leonard Flynn Elementary. I've had the pleasure of working with Phil over the last six months to try to get clean water for our school. The way that this started was a simple Google. Last summer, the water fountains and filtration at our school is abysmal, and so I wanted to see how much it would cost. And so I started going through, basically, an RFP process of my own to try to figure out what it would cost and how much I could ask someone to help me fix the water problem at our school. I met Phil, and we have devised a plan to get water at our school. The issue is, we are actually getting less donation now because it took so much time for us to figure out how to accept said donation that we're only getting a fraction of what we were supposed to get in the first place. And so now we won't have water filtration on Floors 2 and 3 at our school because of bureaucracy. So I ask you to please help us figure out how to enable parents to know how to better advocate for our schools. Thank you. Please vote yes.
Thank you.
Hi, Patrick Wolf. A couple days ago at the Ad-Hoc Committee, Elliot Duchon emphasized the importance of communicating to the community, explaining not only the what, but the why of what this district is going through. I'd like to emphasize that I think, as difficult as this process is, and we're only at the beginning, I think it's incredibly important for this board, for all of you, to go out into the community and explain to people not only the what, not only that we need both to cut our budget and to consolidate our schools, not only what that's attempting to accomplish, but also the why. This district did not get hit by a bolt of lightning. This district was mismanaged for years, and many of you on the board bear responsibility for that. And you need to explain to people, not a self-flagellation, but because the only way to build credibility is through honesty, you have to speak much more vigorously to the community. Thank you very much.
That concludes Agenda Items. Vice President Alexander, should we move on to Non-Agenda Items? Thank you. I'm gonna call the names. Please line up. Rajul. Rajul, sorry. Michelle. Yes. Emily. Caleb. Oliverio. And Brandy Markman and Virginia Marshall. Please come line up. You have one minute each.
Good evening. I'm a proud parent of a second grader at Jose Ortega Elementary School in the Mandarin Immersion Program. Last week, we emailed a letter to the district and school board that was signed by over 125 parents from our school, articulating why we believe maintaining an integrated Mandarin immersion and GE model is crucial for the continued success of both MI and GE students at Ortega. I encourage you to read the entire letter, which we've brought paper copies of tonight. Here are some highlights. Integrating GE and MI programs fosters diversity and resource sharing, both of which could be compromised by segregating the programs. The collective student body of Ortega mimics the rich diversity of San Francisco. Segregating the GE and MI programs could result in demographically homogeneous schools that no longer reflect our community. 100 years ago, this community celebrated the passing of Brown versus Board of Education, and we feel like this would be a major step back from that integration. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emily Kayler, parent at Jose Ortega, and I just wanna continue what Rajni was talking about. So in 2004, Ortega was on probation for failing to meet federal standards for performance. Three years later, after Mandarin immersion was introduced at the school, the school has now achieved high academic performance despite being a Title I school. In 2023, Ortega earned a National Blue Ribbon Award, making it one of three, only one of three schools to earn this achievement in SFUSD Elementary School. The reputation for Ortega has increased, and the demand is high. We're expected at 95% capacity this fall. So Ortega has found a recipe for success demonstrated by their success. Relocating the MI and GE program and not integrating, keeping the schools not integrated is gonna slow the progress for both GE and MI students.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Handani. I'm the Jose Ortega PTA President, as well as active SSC member and parent of an incoming third grader in the Mandarin Immersion Program at Jose Ortega. Our PTA is made up of both parents from both the General Education and Mandarin Immersion Programs. And continuing on to what Rajni and Emily were saying, the reason why it's important to keep our schools integrated in terms of our language programs is that some of the important stats to consider. 70% of our PTA board members are actually made up of Mandarin Immersion families. Of the PTA's annual fundraising, about 75% has been fundraised and donated from the MI families, Mandarin Immersion families. These numbers reflect that the significant support of our school actually does come from language immersion families, who represent only about 33% of our school. This type of support at Jose Ortega should be valued and strongly considered by the district as a reason for maintaining our integrated immersion programs. And by maintaining the integration of the General Education and Mandarin Immersion Programs at Jose Ortega is the best way we can accommodate and support the diverse needs of our families. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brandy Markman. I'm a public school parent. In a previous life, I worked in adult education. I've been quoted in publications like The Washington Post talking about the influence that pro-school privatization billionaires have in our schools. And so as an educator, I want the public to know that the person who recently just spoke about the need for school consolidation is the former hedge fund manager of Republican billionaire Peter Thiel, and all of you voted to put him on the CBAC. I also want the public to know that the San Francisco Parent Coalition, who our superintendent does town halls with, is funded by two billionaires who have right-wing political agendas. They are in astroturf. They are pushing school closure, and as a parent, they don't speak for me. I don't believe school closure is necessary, and the fact that we have our superintendent doing town halls with astroturf that are funded by pro-school privatization billionaires makes me feel I can't trust him and that I can't trust this school closure process. If you want trust, you need to earn it.
Thank you.
Good evening. As you make significant decisions on budgets, school closures, and layoffs, it is vital to understand the impact on student achievement, equity, and effective use of resources. Being able to generate accurate, data-driven scenario planning allows decision-makers to make better, fully-informed decisions. Some believe a new seven-figure-dollar ERP system purchased earlier this year will solve the challenges highlighted by the audit. Unfortunately, it will not. Anna Plan, located in San Francisco, knows this firsthand, as all our customers have ERP. Thus, it is not possible to alleviate all the challenges documented in the audit in addition to the 70% failure rate of ERP implementations per Gartner Research. We asked the board, direct staff, tonight to meet with Anna Plan and learn how we help 2,500 other clients. We originally reached out to the board and staff on May 7th and have continued to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. On behalf of the NAACP San Francisco Branch, let me go back again. Should Vice President Alexander, Superintendent Wayne, Board Commissioners... On behalf of the NAACP San Francisco Branch, Reverend Dr. Amos C. Brown, President, we vehemently oppose school closures, school mergers. You have wasted more than $44 million on a debunked payroll system. You wasted another $10 million on a consultant. You hired a consultant to close schools. I don't know how you do that. What business course is that? We don't understand that. We ask that you have a fair system to educate all the students who enroll in SFUSD currently and those whose parents would choose to put them in public schools in the fall. So that means no school closures. We also request that you keep ALI whole. ALI is a program brought to you by the community. It functions across the district in an exemplary way. We also want to commend Deputy Superintendent Termechus Rice Mitchell, who retired. He was honored by the mayor and Supervisor Walton today. So again, our request is, please, no school closures. Thank you.
That concludes in-person public comment.
Wonderful. Thank you again to everyone in the room who came to give public comment. We really deeply appreciate it. And hopefully you can stay to hear the... Those of you who are here for the Agenda Item on the school closures, mergers, and colocations can stay and hear the superintendent's presentation and the board discussion as well. But for now, we're gonna go to virtual public comments since we do have some time remaining, and we're gonna follow the same process. First, students, and then Agenda Items, and then if we have time, we'll do Non-Agenda.
Thank you, Vice President Alexander. At this time, we will hear public comment from our virtual participants. Vice President Alexander mentioned, we will hear first from our students, and then we'll go into Agenda Items and then Non-Agenda Items. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Buenas noches. En este momento vamos a comentar con, vamos a comentar con los comentarios públicos. Vamos a comenzar primero con los estudiantes, luego con las cosas que no están en la agenda, y después con las cosas que están en la agenda. Cualquier participante tiene un solo minuto. Gracias.
Thank you. And also wanted to mention, each speaker will have one minute. Can we also have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Todos los participantes tienen un solo minuto para hacer sus comentarios. Gracias.
Gobernantes, hoy es el momento de hacer el discurso en el internet. Cada persona puede levantar la mano. Primero, escucharemos a los estudiantes levantando la mano, luego es hora de los proyectos de interacción, y luego es hora de los proyectos de interacción no interaccionantes. Cada persona tiene un minuto de discurso. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. If you're a student and you care to speak, would you please raise your hand? Seeing no hands raised, moving on to our Agenda Items. If you'd like to speak to any of the items on our agenda, please raise your hand. Rianda?
Good evening, Board Commissioners and everybody in attendance tonight. I am Rianda Batiste, and I am a proud APEC parent leader. And tonight, I'm calling in as just a mom, and I'm asking that you all very closely consider the impact that it will have on students and families with your school closures and colocation ideas. A lot has to be considered beyond just the school size and test scores and whatever else, because our students are brilliant, and they deserve to thrive in places that are nurturing for them, even though it's small and number. June, sorry, June Jordan is an example of how mighty a school can be despite being small. They are producing amazing students. And as a mom who's now forced with trying to figure out preschool options, I implore the board to make a decision sooner rather than later regarding school closures, colocations, or whatever, because leaving us in limbo is not a good feeling, and it's not encouraging of future families to return to the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison?
Hi, my name's Allison. I'm a parent of a high school student in the district. I'm really just appalled that you're accepting and using these questionnaire results that are so lopsided in the people who answered them and how they don't represent the school district community, that the people who answered them in terms of their race and their education level, that is not representative of the SFUSD community, and you all know it. And also that there was no effort to include student voices in this. You so easily could have just asked all of the high school students to fill out these questionnaires. So you're gonna twist it to say that you manipulated this data to make it representative, but we all know that it's not. That's all.
Thank you. Catherine?
Hi. I was really concerned at seeing the equity criteria as presented. Nothing within the equity criteria that talks about considering the racial or socioeconomic segregation. I'm the parent of a student at the Star King Elementary, and we have a very similar situation to Jose Ortega, where we have an experiential learning program as well as the Mandarin program. We have incredible partnership amongst the two programs, but those would not exist any longer if we're separated. I know there was some interest in separating or in combining all of the language programs, but to do that would exacerbate the segregation, and so we're really concerned that we're not seeing that.
Thank you. Emily?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, please.
I'm also a parent at Star King. Two kids, two elementary students that go to my local school. We've also attended early education at Daniel Webster, Spanish immersion. I wanna say that these are two gyms in our neighborhood. They were also a threat of being closed over 14 years ago, and it was a school district that implemented an immersion combined with a GE education to make these schools survive. that implemented an immersion combined with a GE education to make these schools survive. Rethinking that sort of setup and structure from all the language pathways discussions I've heard is really disheartening. These are really important to our community. I also want to say, as far as equity goes, I'm not seeing a single thing or piece of language that talks about the massive amount of housing and demolition that's been happening in our neighborhood. These neighborhoods in general are densified, yet you're taking past historic data, and in particular at Star King, they've been demolishing the housing. So, our, our school is having a decrease in GE, but because of literally, and it's going to be huge. So, you guys are really, we're not backwards.
Leilani?
Hi. Let me know if you can hear me. As a San Franciscan, this is very, this is just very strictly, it's very hard to understand the process here. You've had two surveys, the surveys aren't matching, many parents didn't know about the second survey. So, I don't know how you're using that data as part of your requirements of closing school. You haven't talked about what you will do with the new mission campus. So, if you're building up that school and closing other schools, you needed to be honest at the very beginning. Third, San Francisco has talked about the investment in children, which begins in education. So, when you talk about closing schools, what are you presenting to parents, to students, and to San Francisco as a whole? On the final point, I don't believe this board understands the budget. I don't think they ever did. I don't think you have the qualifications to. I don't think that, as we now know, the school district representatives that are in charge of our budget knew what they were doing. So, I really think that this should be a delayed process until we, I know you have some guidance from FMAT, but to me, you're acting like it's a partnership, and this is not a partnership. You all have failed.
Thank you. I'm so sorry to have to cut you off. That is your time. Thank you. Rory?
Oh, I just wanted to check, are these non-agenda items or agenda items before I speak?
We are moving on, or, that was the last agenda item. So, either agenda or non-agenda, we're, we're moving on to non-agenda now.
Okay, great. I'll do non-agenda. So, I just wanted to sort of note a concern I had with President Modadami and the way she spoke with Mr. Diaz at the last meeting, and referred to him by his first name, Edwin. And as a person of color and him being a man of color, I just found it very hurtful to hear that him referred that way when he's a director, so maybe Director Diaz, because nobody calls her Laney, they call her President Modadami. So, I just want to make sure that, you know, I talked to other community members, African-American members, and they were also hurt. So, I just think either a public apology or a private reflection so that we're using proper decorum, and our president of our board is using proper decorum when they're referring to staff, who are all working hard to, you know, help kids. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll hear non-agenda items. If there are any other members of the public who wish to give their public comment on non-agenda items, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised.
All right. Thank you so much to everyone who gave public comment, particularly to the school communities, June Jordan, Jose Ortega, Star King, and there maybe were others that I've, SF community, thank you. Yes, I knew there were others. Really, and everybody who spoke, really appreciate it, and, you know, we understand as a board that this, especially this process around considering school closures, mergers, and consolidations is really challenging, and, you know, we're working to improve with every step of the way, and your input really does matter. And I know it can be difficult in this forum or online to know or to even understand whether we're listening, but just rest assured that a lot of the comments you've made are comments that I've heard my colleagues make, and I think they're really, we are hearing you, even if we may not, you know, we don't know where we're going to land yet, and we're going to hear this from the superintendent, but I just want to emphasize that. I think it really matters, and we're going to also try to provide as many more opportunities for comment and community engagement as we can moving forward throughout this process. So, again, thank you very much for being here. It means a lot to us, and we really appreciate it. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent for the agenda item on this topic, and where he's going to, he and staff are going to do a presentation, and then we'll have board discussion.
Thank you, Vice President Alexander, and good evening again. And, yes, so tonight, we'll be sharing an update on our resource alignment initiative, and particularly around our proposals for school closures, consolidations, and mergers. And we're going to be entering a critical phase of the process, and so we're seeking your feedback and guidance as we move forward with the next steps. But first, I do want to, can you put up the other, the presentation deck? So, we have two decks. We have a 103-slide reading deck that has all the information we've gone over for the past several months, and then we have a presentation deck, which I'll be sharing, that highlights some key, key information. And while the first slide is still, it's the other one. There you go. I want to echo President, Vice President Alexander's appreciation for those who've come out tonight. I want to particularly thank the June Jordan students who are there, who are here this evening, and just their, how they are sharing what is important to them. And actually, one of the students, Alan, invited me to June Jordan, and I had an opportunity to sit and speak with them and hear how much their school means to them, but really hear what kind of experiences that have made a difference in their lives, that make them, now, you hear them, excited about school and feeling cared for, and that this is a place where they are developing the skills and the agency needed to realize our vision, that they leave here ready to lead productive lives and as leaders in our community. So, I just have really appreciated those opportunities to speak with them and other students who we've spoken to along the way about this process. And as Vice President Alexander said, we are taking that in to help inform our plans. And, okay, hold on a second. I think we still, I think it's still not the presentation deck. Okay. So, thank you for your patience. So, again, I have appreciated the opportunity of conversations, and thank you for the opportunity not to share with our commissioners. We talk about this as our resource alignment initiative, and we actually are being really intentional about using that phrase, not trying to obscure any intentions other than saying that this is about making sure that our resources are being used to fulfill our commitment to equity and excellence, not to balance the budget, but to make sure that we can provide the students with the opportunities they deserve. And we said, to be able to do that, you've heard me talk about that we need to have fewer but better schools. And so, I want to just start off by saying, what does that mean? And really thinking from just a very practical teacher-student-centered, student-centered perspective, what that means. Well, if we're talking about having better schools, we need to begin with making sure that we have qualified teachers in the classroom. And this has been a struggle for us and many other school districts over the, over the years. And right now, this school year, or this past school year, when we started the year, we had not filled 21% of our vacant positions, and we had 15% of our classrooms then covered by substitutes or teachers on special assignment who had to be reassigned and couldn't support teachers, but instead were supporting, had to teach in the classroom. And so, we believe when we have fewer classrooms, we'll have a much better chance of making sure every classroom has a qualified teacher, and every elementary school has an instructional coach, and that we can follow through on this commitment to improve instruction. Let me give another example. You've heard, we have a commitment to our, to supporting our teachers and to making sure that our teachers have an opportunity to collaborate. And we know that for both our teachers and our students, when there's more than one class at grade level, that allows opportunities for interactions that you can't have when there's one classroom per grade level. But the challenge is, is right now, we have 32 elementary and K-8 schools that have only one teacher per grade or a combination class, and 39 elementary and K-8 schools have at least two classrooms per grade. And so, we believe that when we have fewer classrooms and fewer schools, we'll have a much better chance of making sure that more teachers will have grade-level peers to plan, collaborate, and learn with, and even for our elementary students, that they'll have different students to interact with during their six years at elementary school. And then, one more, you heard our commitment, or you should know our commitment to our language programs, and you heard about how valuable they are to our families. And so, again, this resource alignment is about having fewer but better programs, not, and not trying to stretch our resources too thin. Right now, what that has led to is by having so many language pathway classrooms across the district, we have a lot of them with 10 to 12 students, not by design, but just because of low enrollment, which has led to having 21 of our elementary schools with language programs having a combination class. And so, we, you know, believe that when we have fewer classrooms, we'll have a much better chance of making sure every student has access to a qualified teacher who can deliver rigorous academic content in the language of the program and in English. So, we have many more examples, but wanted to start with these three very, you know, concrete reasons for why we think having fewer schools will better serve our students and ultimately lead us to be able to follow through on these commitments that we've outlined here, that puts equity at the center and describes the conditions we need to support our most marginalized students, and we feel if we have these in place, it will also support all of our students. And so, tonight is about sharing what, what's our next step in the process of determining how to align our resources, and specifically, what schools we need to consider for closure, colocation, or merger to provide those better educational experiences. And what we're doing, sharing tonight, is how we've used community input as well as looking at legal guidance and our values and best practices to develop criteria that will create a composite score for each school. And this allows us to have a starting place, to have the conversation about which schools to look at for closures, colocations, or mergers. And that, every school will be receiving a composite score, and it's going to be based on the following criteria. So, the, we identified through our process 10 criteria that we'll be using in three categories: equity, excellence, and effective use of resources. And then, what we're bringing forward is a recommendation that the equity category, as this is a core value of the district, gets the greatest weight, that it actually is weighted twice as much as the other two categories around excellence and effective use of resources. And then, we'll use, then, you see here, the different metrics listed to then create that score that every school has. And as we look at, to look a little bit more deeply what these metrics are, in the equity category, we had three criteria: school access, program access, and historical inequities. And based on DAC feedback, we expanded school access, not just to mean how far apart our schools are, how near our schools are, but also how many students live near our schools. Because what we've heard very clearly, even in this round of community engagement, is that what matters to our families is having schools near them. They want to have schools more in their neighborhood, where their students can go with other students who live near them to their school. Then, we also incorporated into this category another metric around the student's socioeconomic status, as well as an AVID program we have at schools. And then, there's been questions about what we mean by when we're going to take equity into account. We actually look, are going to look at and use the Opportunity Insight Lab's Upward Mobility Index, which is a research-based data point to understand the opportunities or inequitable opportunities that different neighborhoods have. In the category of excellence, we're looking at school culture and climate, academic performance, and socio-emotional development. And so, we have these metrics that will inform that area. And then, in the effective use of resources, when looking at the community survey, we actually have four that came to the top, and these are family choice and demand, student enrollment, the condition of the building, as well as teacher turnover. And so, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Ritu Kana, our Head of Research Planning and Accountability, to speak a little bit more about the input we received that helped inform this criteria and these metrics.
Thank you, Dr. Wayne. Good evening, Commissioners and members of the public. As was just said, we administered two surveys to arrive at the criteria just discussed. I would like to acknowledge Dr. Pierman, who has collaborated with the district on the design, administration, and analysis of both surveys. I'm presenting today a snapshot of the survey participation and results for both surveys. For all additional details, please check out the link that is on the left side of the slide, or please go to our website. The first survey. The first survey was designed to identify the most important criteria in each of the three categories. As mentioned earlier, initial criteria were chosen based on what other benchmark districts used, research-advised, and available data. This slide shows us the demographic composition of the 6,849 respondents by role and ethnicity who actually completed all the questions in the survey. The results of the survey led us to identify the top three or four criteria of each category. As you can see them with red arrows right there on the screen. To account for possible bias arising from the composition of the survey respondents not matching the district as a whole, a weighted mean was calculated. So, on the screen, you can see both means, the unadjusted mean and the weighted mean. As seen in this slide, responses weighted by the respondents' racial groups produced quantitatively similar results. We also asked an open-ended question in the first survey, where anyone in the public could recommend new criteria. Twelve themes that you see right here emerged from survey one. Most of them were already either included in the draft criteria or in the equity audit. Some were added to the metric associated with the criteria, and for others, the data was not available to measure the suggested criteria. A second survey was designed to identify the weight of each criterion within its category. This survey was completed by 5,357 respondents. You can see the response breakdown by role and racial/ethnic group. Again, a detailed report is also available on the link that says Community Survey II We asked the public, within the second survey, to distribute 12 coins within each category so that we can see the weight of each criteria within the category. This slide This slide shows the distribution of the weight of each criterion within three categories of equity, excellence, and effective use of resources. Thank you so much. I'm going to pass the mic back to Dr. Wayne to discuss the limitations of the survey.
Thank you, Dr. Khanna, and I appreciate the team effort to gather this information from the community. On the one hand, I'm incredibly proud of the work that has been done here. We received more survey responses than we have in recent memory when doing our work around the vision, values, goals, and guardrails, our superintendent search. We also had more participants in our community sessions than we've had in recent efforts to hear from the community. At the same time, you know, we know there are areas for improvement as well. And two that I just want to highlight and own are that we worked through are the needs for, you know, getting the response rate that reflects our community as well as trying to find the balance between being, you know, a straightforward, getting straightforward feedback with the complexity of this topic. And in terms of getting the responses, you know, we made an effort to do that through having meetings across the city in different languages, meeting with our parent advisory committees, sending out emails to our students. I went to the Student Advisory Council. But we recognize that still, we didn't capture all the voices that are critical in helping make these decisions. And while we did the weighting, we know that as we continue with our community engagement, this is an area to continually try to strengthen. And then secondly, when we did the first survey, we kept it very simple of just what's important to you that we should be thinking about when we are making decisions around closures, consolidations, and mergers. And one of the feedback we got was, okay, but what do you exactly mean by that? And then when we shared what we meant by that, it was also, we got feedback that was too, you know, that was, can be confusing because there was a lot of information. The reason why we were trying to find that balance is, we could have kept it very simple, like many other districts did, like actually San Francisco did 20 years ago. They said, we're going to use two criteria: enrollment and, enrollment and capacity. Right? And what that led to was the majority of schools on the east side and the western addition being identified for closure. We had a commitment to look, to be more thoughtful and nuanced in our approach, which meant we needed to include more criteria, which created more complexity in this process. But the intention was, and what I think we'll see in how we develop our composite scores, is, you know, a much more equity-centered assessment of our schools than just using simple criteria like that. With that being said, I also really want to appreciate the district advisory committee. So no matter how well-written the survey is, no matter how accessible a town hall is, you can only get so much information in an hour and a half. These are community leaders who volunteered their time for over 30 hours to go in-depth on this topic. So you might see that, and you will see, we actually took some of their recommendations and followed, and incorporated them into what we're presenting tonight because they had a perspective on these challenges that we just couldn't, you know, the community couldn't get from the short time that we spent in the meeting. So I want to appreciate their work. And up on the screen is how their recommendations were incorporated. Okay, then I just want to end by emphasizing that as we make these decisions, it's not going to be one criteria on its own, like enrollment that matters. It's actually looking at all of these factors to make the best decision to provide the educational experiences our students deserve. So, and then one other thing is to make sure, in addition to how we front-loaded equity in this process, when, after we develop our recommendations, we're going to go through an equity audit to ensure that we're not disproportionately impacting any one community. Okay, so I want to just now speak for a moment about what is, what to look forward, moving forward. What to look ahead at as we move forward. So when I shared in our community meetings, there's both an art and a science to this, developing a new school portfolio. We do want to have some objective criteria for where to start. That's what our composite score will provide. But then we want to look at other factors and need to look at other factors to help make the best decision. And that's where some of the art comes in. And you see here on the screen, the factors we're going to be considering. We start with the composite score, but we're looking at also the optimal school size. And we've made a commitment to have multiple school sizes in this district. We're not, we're not a one-size-fits-all district. We're not going to have a one-size-fits-all portfolio. And, you know, we're going to look then at our other commitments that we've made to inform this, as well as our school staffing plan that we developed to demonstrate how we think we can meet our goals and guardrails. And that's the work that we're going to do during the summer. And then we're going to come out in the fall with our recommendations. And when our administrators come together, we're going to start by talking with them about this resource alignment process. And then we're going to convene as a governance team in August to review what we have been doing to develop the portfolio. And then in September, we'll share the portfolio with our community. You're not going to take action until December because it's important to us to go out to the community, again, re-engage with two key questions, to understand, what did we miss? We know there is knowledge that our students shared, staff shared, families shared, that we'll need to inform the final recommendations that we make. And then also, what do you need to make sure that this is a process that while, I don't want to pretend it's not going to impact students, but people can quickly see how it's going to put our schools in a better place and their students are going to be settled in their schools. So then we bring it forward by November, we bring it forward for a first reading on November 12th, and then for action on December 10th. And, you know, so I've been sharing a lot. So I'm going to skip to just a couple other key points here. One is, something that came up a lot, and want to just be very clear on, is our recommendations are for a new portfolio that includes updating our enrollment process. The board had approved a new enrollment plan back in 2020, but it hasn't been implemented yet. And this is an opportunity to really re-envision how we do enrollment so that we can follow through on what matters to our community. And what matters to our community is that this idea of proximity, having schools near where families live. And also predictability, not having to wonder, you know, what 72, you know, elementary K-8 schools is my child going to get into? But have a little bit greater certainty of what the process looks like. And then while still maintaining diversity, or improving diversity in our schools. Then I just want to end by where, end by talking again about our commitments, right? That we are doing this not just to solve a budget problem, but to be able to use our resources to follow through on our commitments. And this is, and I say that because this is not the only initiative we have to try to align our resources to better serve our students. There's a lot of initiatives on that screen, but I want to highlight, like, we are implementing new literacy and math curriculum to provide a better experience. We are looking at our use of facilities to provide a better experience. So this is, this is a key factor in being able to deliver on our commitments, but it's not the only factor in doing so. And that's why our resource alignment initiative we've talked about has different areas in them. And then I just want to end, we can go back to these if there's questions about some of the details. But want to end with, you know, again, as we've got, as we've talked about going through this process, we've said, we're learning from the research best practices and we don't want to, and we want to learn from our history, not repeat the mistakes of the past. And the last time we went through this, 20 years ago, this process did disproportionately impact our most vulnerable students. And again, we used two criteria. It happened very quickly. And there wasn't the kind of conversation and ultimately focus on student outcomes that this process needs to be about. And that is, you know, that is, in the end, what will demonstrate that this was a necessary action by ensuring that these commitments that we have for our students and our families, we're able to say much more assertively, yes, this is what you can count on in your schools. And I'll end by saying, when I was in our community sessions, I asked families, raise your hand if this is what your child's experience is when, at our schools. And unfortunately, most cases, there are very few hands that were raised, that they could say confidently at their schools. Our families love our schools, but they can't say that all of this is in there. And they're always fighting for what they need for their students in our schools. And so again, ultimately, this is to realize those commitments in our whole school portfolio, so we can meet our goals for our students. So with that, I'll turn it over to the Board of Education for, oh, you can leave that for discussion. And again, again, we've been working on this for, yeah, for many months. So right now, do you want the focus of the discussion is, what do the next few months look like? What are your questions and feedback on the process moving forward?
All right, and before, wait, before you take the slide, sorry. Can we leave the slide up for just one moment? So before we take the slide away, I just want.
Go to the slide with the questions.
Yeah, the question. I just want Board members to see what our framing is for this discussion. So, and it says, let me make sure I get it right. Questions and feedback for the process moving forward. So the goal here, colleagues, is for us to give feedback and ask questions to support the process moving forward. So if we have, you know, critiques of what happened before, let's try to, not to say that we can't make critiques, but let's reframe them toward recommendations or questions or suggestions for what needs to happen now, moving forward. I also want to, thank you, I appreciate it. I also want to say that this is a discussion item, right? We're not voting. And so the, rather than doing the round robin that we sometimes do as a, when we're voting, President Matamadi and I consulted. And we're thinking that actually it might be more productive to have a topic-by-topic discussion. So I wanted to start by sort of asking each of you if, what are the issues areas that you'd like to talk about in this area? And then we're going to sort of talk through each one. So we can have a little discussion about whatever we think are the issues that we want to raise, rather than, you know, just making a bunch of comments. Like, we really need to have a, give the superintendent direction here. Does that make sense? Oh, go ahead.
Before we jump into this, because I was wondering if it was possible to have Elliot and Pam speak at least just a little bit about kind of the fiscal need of the district and how it relates to this? Just knowing that we've got these items separate, but they're kind of all interconnected between the budget, the negative certification that we got in this process, and just if they had any comment or anything to kind of ground us in regards to that before we started.
Well, unless there's a, I guess, the goal here is to give the superintendent and team direction moving forward. So if there's a specific question you have for them, I think it's good to ask it. But I don't want to, I guess what I don't want to have is just open conversation that's not focused on this goal. So I'm just, I'm wondering, so is there a particular thing you want answered from them?
I'll pull the question back, and maybe there'll be another appropriate time. But I think just bringing up the fact that people have heard from staff that this isn't a necessary process, but more of an optional process, and just, I think, getting some direction and clarity around that. But that's not forward-looking. That's more a reflection of like, where we are and kind of how we got here. But maybe that'll be for some of the budget items coming up, we can address that.
But I hear the question is kind of, is this necessary from a budget point of view? Great, awesome. What other topics or questions we want to bring up?
I would like to hear more about what the equity audit is going to look like.
Equity audit, great.
I'd like to discuss around support for the school communities that will be affected.
Excellent.
I have a whole list. Do you want me to just?
Go for it, just list the topics. Because I just want to try to organize the discussion a little bit.
Okay. I have the composite scores and the criteria. I have some specific questions there. This process being undertaken within the timeframe of everything else as referenced on slide 33 or 35, depending on what you're looking at. And equity, and also feedback based, and questions that I have forward-looking based on some of the things I heard by attending all of the DAC meetings since January and their feedback. Historical data on how school closures do harm and what we're doing to mitigate that, to make sure that we don't fall into that same historic trap. How this process falls within the guardrails of effective decision-making and serving the whole child. Those are my main buckets, if that helps.
Yep, that's really helpful.
Thank you. I have a question about what communities, and specifically school site communities and families can expect in terms of engagement in the fall. And have a question about sort of looking, not just at the sort of immediate future, but if we are concerned about continuing declining enrollment, how can we ensure that we're not going to be in this place again in three years?
Commissioner Lamb.
Our topic, I wanted to discuss in more detail around the new enrollment policy and what implementation looks like, its timing. And going back to Commissioner Fisher's topic around school closures and historically of what we know, I would like to understand our approach that is evidence-based and designed more centered around student educational outcomes rather than, I think, other models that we've seen may have just closed for the sake of closing in the name of budget. But I think for us to truly understand, how are we embodying something different?
Great. Commissioner Bogus, and I haven't forgotten about you, President Matamadi. I know you're online, so.
Yeah, I'll keep, I'm just getting everyone here first.
This might fall under the conversation or the topic around equity, but I think around the definition of historical inequities and just kind of, I think, getting, I guess, clear around how we're both looking at inequities in neighborhoods as well as the inequities that's been created by district practices, policies, personnel, and other things.
Great, and don't stress, you can, we'll have time to, if you need to add another one. So I just want to try, I'm trying to organize the conversation. I'm not trying to shut people down. So, President Matamadi.
Echoing many of the themes that I heard from my colleagues around the enrollment process, around school site input and iteration, and also alignment of resources going forward to ensure that we are delivering on that vision and that we are aligning our resources towards the vision that the superintendent laid out, the problems that we're trying to solve for because we know our schools are not resourced as well as they could be or they ought to be now, and what it is that, how things are going to be different, and the verification that things are different and improving when we're at the other side of this.
Excellent, okay. Yeah, of course.
I don't think it's in our slide deck, but just how we, if we do close schools, how we would use those facilities in the future as a community benefit.
Great. Okay, so I'm going to pick a sort of, let me list some of the big ones that I've heard. I'm going to pick a somewhat arbitrary order. But feel free to, you know, again, add in here. I'm just trying to facilitate, I'm not trying to exclude any comments or ideas here. So maybe we can start with the engagement process for this fall? Because I think that's, you know, and I think, I would encourage in that part, we can talk about anything that we think is necessary for that. And then maybe after that, supports for school communities in mitigating harm. And then equity. And then kind of looking three years out and going forward, how the alignment of our vision, alignment of our resources fits the vision. And then enrollment and facilities. And there's some other, I think you listed, Commissioner, there's some other details that may, I think, fit in some of those. And they may overlap a little, but let's try this and see how it goes. So let's start with engagement in the fall. What was, I forget who brought that up, did you mean that? Yeah, did you have a specific question or recommendation there?
Yeah, well, I guess I would, I think it's what we're hearing and what we've been hearing is that transparency is really important. Folks feeling like they have a meaningful opportunity to express opinions and share voices and then have those opinions incorporated into decisions. And knowing that obviously, we're going to be doing a lot of work, you know, in August, but folks will come back in the fall. What can they expect to see from us? And specifically, what kind of engagement can folks be on the lookout for? I think setting expectations is pretty important.
Yes, so we're going to be, as you said, working in July and August. And, you know, this is where we were transparent with the community, like, that we, I shared this many times at the community sessions about the roles and responsibility in this. We wouldn't be doing our job if we just said, you know, what do you want our new school portfolio to look like? So we're going to do that work, but we appreciate it. We've already gotten recommendations and suggestions. gotten recommendations and suggestions, and, and we're gonna be looking closely to make sure that we have a, a plan that follows through on our commitments. We'll then do the equity audit, which sounds like we'll talk a little bit more about what that looks like. And then, in September is when you can, when the community can expect hearing from us about what the recommendations are. And so I shared it briefly in the, in the presentation, but appreciate the opportunity to expand. So we'll share that. We're looking at like a town hall, just so the whole community understands, understands. But then, when we're talking about potentially impacted schools, we're committing to be going to each school community two times. Like, one thing that was really helpful about having the two community sessions was, we heard things, we got to make adjustments and come back out, and there were people who came to both. It was really helpful to continue the conversation. So we'll, we'll meet with each community, impacted community twice. And the key questions are, what did we miss? And what do you need for, for a successful transition? And so what did we miss? You know, we're going, you know, we wouldn't be doing our job if we didn't put out a thoughtful recommendation. But we're recognizing there's going to be things that, that our community is going to suggest that we need to take into account. So, we've been working with other districts, learning about their processes, and San Antonio just went through this process, and they, when they, after they're sharing their initial proposals, there were communities talked about the railroad that went between two schools, and how it was going to be difficult if, if there was a, a change in the portfolio in that area. And so they ended up adjusting their recommendations. So, we're anticipating learning, you know, what, do we have railroads in San Francisco? But we have a lot of freeways in San Francisco. So, you know, we're, we're, we'll surely get feedback in, in different areas. And then, the transition will come out, we don't have it settled now, but we'll come out with what a transition plan looks like, and, and what it means if you're, you know, in the, in different grade levels, and what it means in terms of getting to know a new school, and what the options are. And so that's why we want to have, you know, the multiple meetings with the school community, so they hear about that. And then, really, the, you know, planning all that out, or implementing all that happens after the board takes action from January to June.
Two other, I, I feel like you started to segue into this question of supports for school communities in mitigating harm, which several commissioners raised. Right. Well, that's what I mean. So I don't, so may, so let's, you started to speak to that too, but let's make sure that, are there other questions or recommendations around engagement in the fall? And then, then we can come back to that topic as well.
Yeah, I guess, just, I guess to get clarity around the commitment to engaging communities, especially marginalized communities. I think it's great that we made progress in improving on the results from kind of our previous outing, but it just seemed really disproportionate and doesn't seem like a good representation of our district. And so, I guess I'm curious if you could just, I, I guess, if there's a strategy or a change of strategy, or if it's gonna be the same strategy, kind of moving forward into the fall, where the people who participate are the ones who are kind of the center of the process.
Yeah. And I'm looking at team members, if anybody wants to chime in on, on what I, what I share is, I think, you know, a few things. One, what will be different is we're now going to specific schools, and we'll be able, and, you know, because families in the end are connected to their schools, right? And I think that was one of the, the challenges. We tried to have it throughout the, the city, but when we went to schools, we noticed there were often more members of that particular school, community there. So that's one. Secondly, we did this in round, after round one, and need to do this more, I want to appreciate, we ended up working with our family liaisons more closely. They have connections with the community that we don't have, and with some of the family, their, their job is to connect with families who, apart, we've, it's been hard for our schools to reach. And so, working with them more as well will be, will be really important. And then, lastly, you know, I think, we heard, you know, hearing from our students, how that's important. It was great to be out at some schools and talking with our student advisory councils. Do you think we're gonna need to leverage time with the students during the school day to be able to have some of those conversations? So we sent out the survey, and we crafted a message directly, you know, for students. But I think if we're not thinking through how we're capturing students when they're at school, we're gonna miss out on that voice. So those, those are three ways we're thinking that this will be, you know, try to bring it to the next level of really connecting. So it's being at the school site, working with our staff who are connected with their families, and working more directly with students.
So that, that means there isn't a change in approach or goal towards kind of like the numerical aspects of who's hit, but there is, like, gonna be a consistent effort to do more things at particular schools. I guess in here, specifically, if there's gonna be something done specifically to increase participation and engagement amongst marginalized communities or communities that were underrepresented in the initial first two survey processes?
Yeah. So I think I, I shared, yeah, so I, I guess we don't have an, I don't know, we don't have yet necessarily any numerical target to, to reach. And so those are the efforts to be able to more directly connect with those, those families.
And can I ask one clarifying question? So, as, so what I'm hearing then is, the next round will follow the same format. Does that mean there will be another survey going out? Is that what I heard you say?
No. So it won't follow the same format. So first of all, when we met at a school, it was like, anybody could come to that school. Now we're meeting with, we're gonna meet with the school that's directly impacted, and it's for that school. Secondly, right now, we don't have any surveys planned for that. We'll want to have a process for collecting feedback, right? But, but it's gonna be more through the, the meetings, and I don't know that we've planned other, other steps for that.
Thank you for that clarification.
Commissioner Lamb?
Thank you. My comment was related to the engagements, and I just wanted to note that we heard from public comment, we've been receiving feedback overall, is the recognition is, not only my ask is the engagement of that school community, but looking broader around the school community and how it lies, that it doesn't operate, quote, "in a vacuum" in, beyond the walls, so to speak, or area of the school building. And I'm certainly sure you will hear from that school community about that in particular, because it is, you know, how do these schools operate within our city at large? And then, another aspect around the engagement is being able to, I think, do direct measurement around what progress we have made, particularly in hard-to-reach or hard, to communities that we haven't been able to engage yet, to, again, demonstrate our commitment, our ability to make progress in engaging in folks and raising the voices that we haven't heard yet.
So I'll just lift up some themes that I've heard here. One is, well, it's the main theme, it's a similar theme, the need to target marginalized communities more with specific goals, that we've heard from several commissioners. You know, and I think there's, that's been a consistent theme from the board, so that, so not just the schools, but, you know, English language learner students, or students from ethnic groups that have been underrepresented in the surveys, et cetera, et cetera. And then this broadening the school community point. So, let's, if it's okay with my colleagues, let's move on to number two. We can always come back, but the second theme, which the superintendent already started talking about, supports for school communities as this happens. How are we mitigating harm? How is our approach different from other cities? We heard a little bit already. Colleagues, are there other kind of concerns, questions, recommendations that you'd like to make? Let's start with Commissioner Fisher and then Commissioner Lamb.
Yeah. I, I want to recognize, first of all, how much we have going on at the same time. Like I mentioned, slide 33 and 35 really points out all the huge initiatives that we have going on. And that slide lays it out visually very well. And so, I think when we, we talk about this process, okay, reframe me again, so I don't go off on a tangent. What question, which of my questions am I asking?
So, this is around supporting for school, supports for school communities and mitigating harm during the process. This impacted schools. So a school is gonna be merged or closed. How do we mitigate har- harm? Because we know, and we should say this for the public, I mean, I think all the, the data out there suggests that school closure and merger is a traumatic experience. So we, that's, we're not gonna pretend that it's not. So what are, what are we doing that would mitigate that harm, and to ensure that students there, you know, are actually gonna, again, we think in the long run, they're gonna do better. But even in that transition, critical transition period, how are we mitigating harm?
Thank you. I'm going to try very hard to stay on topic here, because I think so much is related. But, so part of the reason I did reference that slide that shows so much going on at the same time, is it is also interrelated. So at the same time as we are talking about school closures, co-locations, or mergers, we also recognize that in order to meet our goals, we have a lot of work we have to do, and, you know, third-grade reading levels, eighth-grade math. So, we're adopting a new ALI curriculum. What, what else are, I mean, I don't want to get off on too many tangents, but we've talked a lot about how much money we're spending to send kids outside of our schools, you know, to non-public schools, or, or bringing in non-public agency personnel, because we can't hire the right people in-house. So, at the same time, as we're looking at mergers, co-locations, and closures, what are we also doing to plan for the programs that we know that we so desperately need? You know, and where are we saving space or building those programs in? I mean, into all of, I, that's, I think, one of the things that I see missing, and one of the huge ways that we can mitigate harm. You know, if we had programs for kids with dyslexia in our schools, and we weren't sending them out at huge expense to us and huge trauma to the families, right? And the students in particular. So, where is that built into this program?
So can I reframe this as a recommendation? It sounds like what we're, what Commissioner Fisher was asking for is like, to, when, when the portfolio recommendation comes out, you want to see, how is this integrating those needs? Am I right about that?
Yes.
Yeah. Because again, we wouldn't necessarily see that yet, because we're not getting the recommendation. But when we have the recommendation for the new portfolio, we want to be able to see, how are we gonna be better serving kids with dyslexia? How are we gonna, as an example?
As one example, yes.
But across the board, is that right?
And I can also speak to it some when we get to the, how are we using our facility? How will we use our facilities?
I just, just wanted to make sure that was part of the plan. That's all. I'm not asking for specifics now. I just want to make sure that's part of the plan.
Great. No, that's perfect. Commissioner Lamb?
Something that we heard over the weekend in meeting with colleagues across the country that have undergone school closures, was around student supports. And one thing that, a reflection from one of the school districts mentioned around, I had asked about tutoring as an example. And they recognized that high dosage tutoring is something that they wish they would have been more intentional and invested upfront, both not only, once it was made an announcement, because we've seen the research around academic, you know, outcomes, educational learning does have a drop once those announcements are made. But then also then, how do we follow the student to their new school and be able to support that, the students and their learning? So that's one recommendation that had came out, and in learning that came out from colleagues. The other thing that, around mitigating harm and intervention supports around, you know, we've seen really strong progress and success within each and every student by name, with our kindergarteners, particularly with our Black and PI Pacific Islander kindergarteners. And so, I think that's something that I would encourage us to look at, that each and every student impacted by school closures and consolidations, and how will families have navigators to be able to support them through this process. And I think often, we've heard it's, you know, it's also the heart of this, right? How are we being empathetic to understanding that this is going to be hard? And that as a district, we want to be here for our students and our families and our staff. And so that's just something for consideration. And how do we leverage those resources through our out-of-school-time partners, both within, quote, our system of ELOP-funded programming, to the city resources of our nonprofit providers?
So, wonderful, thank you. So I'm hearing, to summarize, from Commissioner Fisher, I think others have shared this as well. How, how will the new portfolio be improving education programmatically? From Commissioner Lamb, how will we be providing individualized support through things like tutoring, personal navigators, those kind of things, for those kids that are directly impacted? And I think those are, again, are themes that we've heard from other districts. Anything else on this topic, or can we move on to the next one? Do you want to comment?
No, just, this is really helpful. And I, when I went over the timeline of what to happen next, what will happen next, I did not mention, again, the August 27th workshop. So these are really helpful on thi, and why we're having that workshop then is to be able to share more detail. Okay, here's how we've taken this feedback and incorporating it before making the announcements, so both you and the community is confident that, okay, there is more specifics about how you're engaging families. Or, okay, this is what the transition plan looks like. So this is really, really helpful guidance.
Okay. There was a question that was raised around looking forward, several of, I forget who said all these specifics, but, you know, somebody said three years out. How is this alignment of resources going to, maybe this was President Matamadi, going to help us meet our vision? How's it gonna be different? Do you want to comment on that, Superintendent, or do you want other?
Well, I, I might be combining things.
I probably was. I was trying to combine themes. So, do you want to comment first?
Yeah. I mean, I guess more specifically, you know, we, we've heard from the public, well, if we're doing better, we won't have declining enrollment. And so why don't we focus on doing better so that we can fill our schools? And so, I guess, my question, one question is like, how do you respond to that? And then, and then based on the response, how do we ensure that what we're doing, you know, we will be able to see meaningful gains and improvements for our students? And that if there is continuing declining enrollment, and we can't do anything to sort of like, stop that floodgates, how do we make sure that we're not in this position again, which, as you mentioned, is disruptive and can hurt and feel very painful to communities again in a few years?
Yeah. So we're looking at this as, you know, setting up the district for the next, you know, 20, 30 years, right? Not needing to just do this again. And that, that was one of the challenges. We have a, a slide in our reading deck that shows, you know, when, when San Francisco did this before, they ended up, I, I think the initial recommendation had 19 schools, ended up moving forward with four, and then immediately, I mean, even since then, there was talk, this is something that the district needs to do. And so, you know, so we are looking at the long term, and then, but we are looking at both, you know, the, when you look at our enrollment, the reality is, is that, you know, San Francisco, the Bay Area, California is facing, you know, a declining population, you know, fewer kindergarten births, we have less students. Now, we know we hear about development in the city, and, you know, trying to make things more affordable, but we're planning, so we're not, if we have right now 48, you know, let's say 49,000 students, we're not planning for 49,001 students, because we're, want to give ourselves some flexibility. But we, you know, but we do want to plan, want to give us that flexibility while being, you know, recognizing, we want to serve the 49,000 students who are enrolled in us now as best as possible. And then, lastly, like, I feel like, this is something that also, when we, when we come out with our portfolio, can offer more specific examples. This is what I've heard, both from the board and from the community, about like, that, you know, okay, so what is gonna be different? What is going to be, going to be better? So, we are trying to, you know, center this around the, the goals and guardrails. So an example I've given is, you know, the guardrail of serving the whole child, right? And so, we have some strategies, like having a coordinated care team, and having a social worker at, at all of our schools. Right now, with a social worker at all of our schools, we're deficit spending, right? We're stretching our resources too thin. So if you want to do that in a sustainable way, this is why we need to think about how many schools we're trying to serve. But why that's so important, and I've talked to social workers in our, in our district about this. They've said, we've had social workers have had to go between sites. They said how hard it is, because you can't tell students at a school, you know, Tuesday's not my day here, so please don't have any social-emotional needs on Tuesday, wait till Wednesday when I come back, right? And so that's where, that's the kind of better experience we're talking about. I do recognize when, you know, we have our general, you know, like, the commitments and specifics, but I think when we come out with our portfolio, we'll be more able to name like, oh, here's why this school, or this group of schools that historically have not had these opportunities will, will get them.
Do you want to add to that, or comment on this topic?
On this topic, yes. I, that's a helpful framing. And I think one of the other themes that I heard attending DAC meetings and heard here in public comment too, you know, and Commissioner Lamb alluded to, mentioned it as well, you know, our schools don't exist in a vacuum. They exist as part of the social safety net within our community. We are part of the larger community. And so, where is that reflected in the planning? Like, for example, we've got the, the housing element in the city, right? So where are we taking into account, I know, we contract with demographers, and I would love to see where that's taken into account here in our planning, in our portfolio planning as well, just as we move forward.
Just briefly, there's, yeah, so there's the demographer studies, but then there's the collaboration that we're planning for with the city. That we haven't detailed out here, but the key departments are DCYF, Department of Early Childhood, MTA, and then, yeah, anything, the housing or anything there. But those three in particular are, are critical, because we already have partnerships. But those three in particular are critical because we already have partnerships with them and, you know, and we're serving the same students, you know, it's just from different perspectives.
Related to the engagement and kind of the forecast of three years is my incur, you know, plea again around, while our preschool programs for SFUSD is not included in the kind of portfolio analysis, my ask is, what is the role of early education in the universal pre-K that's occurring in the city through a mixed delivery model system that includes SFUSD, we're the largest preschool provider in the city? And what does that continuum look like with children ages three upwards to when they graduate with us at 18, 19 years old?
All right. So, again, it sounds like these are recommendations for things that the board would like to see in the new portfolio, that these questions would be answered, that there's been some strategic thinking around them.
And that relates back to the continuum of preschoolers to our district is so that it mitigates harm and that there feels like, oftentimes I hear from early educators, the importance around a warm, you know, quote, handoff or a warm continuum, because our families like in early Head Start and Head Start are very much used to something very robust, comprehensive, and when they land into the district, at times it's kind of like a bit of swimming on your own, jumping into Z-bend. There's a lot of metaphors that I've heard directly from parents and from early educators. So, I think there's just a real opportunity there and to ensuring that that enrollment of our students continue.
So, that was a whole big topic of items around looking forward, and I think, you know, around the early ed, housing element, you know, planning, planning for the years, the years out. All right. Let's, we have three topics left, and we can add one if necessary, but the three left are equity, the enrollment policy, and the use of facilities that then aren't used for educational purposes. So, let's jump into talking about equity. So, equity, equity audit, historical inequities, I see some, let's, Commissioner Sanchez go first since she hasn't spoken.
Yeah, I brought that up because that, to me, is the linchpin of whether we do this right or wrong. So, no matter what we do, it's been referenced, it'll be very, very difficult for families and students, no matter what happens, closures, mergers, or relocations, or co-locations. But an equity audit, which we're, we're apparently the only district that's employing in this process, is so important. Can you talk more about what that entails and what it could mean for us? Because there is, the language in here is a little slippery. It says it's kind of an aim. I would like it to be really, really secured that the equity audit will mean that no single population or populations will be affected more than another in this process.
Yeah. And can we go back to the slide with the equity audit? Let me just look and see which number it is. It's slide, ah, slide, the one after no single, keep going back. Look at it. Yeah, slide 26. Okay. Yeah. So, as I was saying, what we've learned from other districts is, what other districts have not done is said that when we are, you know, we're going to need to go through this process around school closures, what should the criteria be? And it's typically been then enrollment, you know, building use, sometimes bringing in the academics. You know, we had in a previous presentation, I think it's in the reading deck, what other districts have done. In California, there's this Assembly Bill 1912 that, so districts have tried to follow in a few instances, but was relatively new. And then Attorney General Rob Bonta gave some additional guidance on this. And so, while we are not required to follow this, we're using the principles of it to guide the work. And so, up here, it describes what an equity audit entails. And so, I think what you're looking for is the reassurance that this is under F, that we're looking to make sure there's a balance of pupil demographics, including, including race or ethnicity, pupils with disabilities, you know, lists all the pupils, and that the replacing and the resulting demographic balance of placement after placement in other schools, in order to determine if the decision to close or consolidate will have a disproportionate impact on any one particular demographic group. So, that's key. So, like, when we did this in 2005, that it was about 3,000 students who were impacted, 30% of them were African-American, but they only, at that time it was a larger number, but they still represented, yeah, 9% of the group. And the same thing was the case for Latino students. So, that is now formally baked into this process. That will actually happen before we make the recommendations, you know, public, we're going to, you know, develop our recommendations and run it through this. We'll have a couple scenarios, and if, if they come out, I don't know, for lack of a better word, wrong, right, like inequitable, we'll have to go back to the drawing board.
I have a lot of comments here. Okay. So, framing everything from the standpoint of equity, I think, you know, I think it was Commissioner Bogus who had mentioned the historic inequities, right? And you touched on, you know, Commissioner Sanchez and Superintendent Wayne, just how inequitably the last round of closures was and the harm done there. So, I really, really appreciate that we're learning from the past here. And we have heard so much fear and so much mistrust from the community. And so, I think, to me, my definition of equity through this process is going to mean an overabundance of transparency and honesty. I think that's going to be critical through the process. And I appreciate that you recognize that we haven't captured the voices that we need to so far in this process. Some of the things that I've heard at the DAC though, that I really want to lift up, we have our three buckets for our criteria, you know, right? Excellence, equity, and alignment of resources. And what I hear over and over again, that excellence is equity, appropriately aligning our resources is equity. And so, there's tension in, in having them as three separate buckets when I see them all as the same thing, right? And so, I, to me, that feels like cognitive dissonance. So, I'd love to hear that, so that's one. I have some questions about how equity is reflected in the criteria, that I don't know if this is an appropriate place to ask or if I should wait, because I think that the criteria, we're going to talk about that a little bit later, or should I?
No, this is the time, if you have a concern, name it.
Okay. Okay. So...
So, what, first question is for Superintendent is, why is equity listed separately? It really is, should be the same.
Right.
Okay.
So, second, my second question is, when we've heard so many comments about the survey, we've heard from so many different communities about how the survey was so confusing, the language translations were, community members just said terrible, that was not my word, that's community's word, you know, how we had about half of the folks actually abandoned the survey too because it was so confusing. I'm wondering how, I'm wondering why we think this is a valid measure to use in helping to develop our equity criteria? So, that's another question. So, another question, SBACK test scores, we know that SBACK test scores are a measure as much of socioeconomic status as they are, more so even than academic outcomes, what our students know, what they can do. And I think that everyone agrees that academics are important, but I'm wondering why we think the SBACK test measures are the equitable criteria to use. And I also want to name that underutilization is often a, it's often a, it's often a euphemism, let me start over, underutilization is often a euphemism, I'm going to just, euphemism, that's the word I'm trying to come up with, for being under-resourced, for historic underresourcing. And so, I'm afraid that when we use underutilization as a criteria, we're really just measuring the chronic underresourcing and inequity that already is aligned within a school. So, so when we look at some of, so...
Should we try to get responses on these?
Yeah, I could keep going, I'll stop.
No, I know, but again, like, I, and I really respect and appreciate the points you're making, Commissioner Fisher is making. I just think, again, like, we need to, at this point, if we need to make a recommendation to move forward, right, if we want to change something, we've got to say it, right, if we're like, we shouldn't use this, we should use this instead, right? So, again, what's our, what's, I'm just trying to encourage us to move forward rather than to, yeah, rather than to say, because I think we all could make critiques, right, and which are fair, and the question is, what do we do moving forward? So, I don't know if Superintendent has thoughts or other commissioners?
Well, I do, you know, to the first question you said, I actually, I'm not trying to shift responsibility here, but part of the reason of having this meeting is, and having this as a discussion, is we haven't really had a chance as a governance team to talk through this. So, I want to, I would actually, I think it'd be helpful for other board members to share your thoughts on, you know, we put out, and you were aware, we were putting out equity, excellence, and effective use of resources as three values that were important, right? And when I shared about them, I said, if we, you know, I explained why I thought all three were necessary, right? Like, if we made decisions without thinking about how we're using our resources, you know, then, then, you know, we're not really accomplishing what we need to, to align them to our goals and guardrails. But if we make decisions without taking into consideration equity, we're going to replicate, you know, the inequities of the past. So, but I'd be interested more to hear from you all, and that might lead into some specific recommendations if we're moving forward about how we're talking about equity. Because it is a word that can mean a lot to a lot of different people, so having this conversation would be helpful.
Can I make one clarifying point before we hear from everyone? I just want to name that a lot of what I'm stating now, it's not new, it's things that I have heard, and I have pages of notes from the different DAC meetings that I've attended since January. These things have all been named in those DAC meetings, anyone can go back to the recordings and take a look at them. And part of why I'm naming them here is I have also been naming them in our briefings behind closed doors. And one of the feedback, one of the points that was made by a member of the DAC was that, hey, we keep bringing you this feedback, yet nothing changes. We're standing on business here, and there's no response from the district. That's why it's being named here.
Yeah, I think it's good to name it. I also just, I also want to focus us on how we want to address it moving forward and what is the will of the majority of the board. So, that's all, I'm just trying to facilitate the process here. So, but Superintendent's asked for other, so let's, what are the other?
Well, can I just clarify?
Yeah.
Because I think it's a good question, but the DAC did recommend that equity be weighted much heavier than the other two buckets, and that, and then the district obliged, and maybe you could talk a little more about that process.
Well, let's see what other, okay, let's see, okay, let's see what other questions or concerns around this are. Do you want to go?
Yeah, specifically around kind of the equity piece, equity audit. Yeah, I think for me, it did feel that in the past, as we look forward, the process pitted equity against some of these other things that are related to. And I know we kind of have made some adjustments to the process to kind of reflect that that's not our intention. But I think it kind of creates a dynamic where people are picking equity versus other things. I think that creates obstacles for us to kind of have a collective vision together. I think I'm still really interested in how we're defining equity as a district. I know we kind of offered, you offered up for us to fill that in, but I think I'm interested in, what is the equity that's kind of at the center of where we have started at and where we've kind of tried to get to? It feels to me that we've kind of taken, let's start from kind of a blank slate and build up, which kind of leaves out a lot of the historical inequities that the district has done, a lot of the things that have kind of historically happened that created the dynamics. I think I'm really interested, as we move forward, how do we ensure that school sites aren't punished by bad decisions, by administrations, by boards that led to sites not being well-kept, not, sites not having adequate staffing? And how, I think, how do we balance what we are penalizing an individual school site for versus, you know, how we're building our perfect portfolio, if that makes sense?
Around the topic of both equity and effective use of resources criteria, I know that, just reflecting on some things that were raised in slide 18 around some themes that came out, that emerged from survey one, something that I've been thinking about a lot over the years in working with our labor partners, you know, around the retention, retention of our workforce and our educators, and improving working conditions so that we don't lose such a significant amount of our educator workforce within the first five years of their teaching. So, I'm really curious, looking forward, you know, as a district with our labor partners, what does that look like around being able to support our educators to stay in this sector and in this work and in their schools? We've tried different things over the years through our labor agreements, you know, to ensuring, you know, hard, quote, hard-to-staff schools don't have a revolving door. And so, that's something I'm really intrigued about for the district to further explore around that teacher turnover. And so, while certainly I am proud of the compensation and, you know, agreements that we've landed on, and I think there's so much more opportunity to look at, what are some possible other options to ensure that there are educators of different years of experience at the school sites we've traditionally seen the highest turnover in?
All right. I think, I mean, in the spirit of recommendations, I think one thing that I'm hearing from colleagues and one thing that I think we've heard from community is, is a desire to understand when you're using the term equity, what does that look like? What does that mean? And I know initially you had said, it's ensuring that we are, that there are, that some communities aren't disproportionately impacted. And I think we need to be even more clear, because if there's a particular community that is very close in access to power, I am much less concerned about an impact there than a community that has, that has been historically disenfranchised and farther away from access to power. So, I think we need to be really clear about what we're talking about when we talk about disproportionate impacts and on who. I also think, I mean, I know that there was feedback when we were looking at the different equity, excellence, and effective use of criteria, in a way, I think it felt as if folks were being, folks were asked to weigh them, right? And I think inadvertently, it suggests that these are at odds or mutually, they're mutually exclusive when they can't be, they have to be held in parallel. And that doesn't mean that we don't weigh equity more. I am really, really glad that the DAC made that recommendation and that the district has adopted it. But I do think in the communications and in our sort of thinking about how the, how the portfolio is established, how it's rolled out, that we are thinking about how we hold them in parallel and how we make sure that it is really clear that you cannot have excellence without equity. And you can't have equity without excellence. So, I think maybe, I don't, let me figure out what the recommendation is. I think being really, really clear, when we say we are centering equity, or when we're giving it 50% of the composite score beyond the three metrics that are listed there, what does that, what does that mean? Maybe a little bit more around there.
Okay, I'm going to, I want to ask, I made a list of some questions. Can I ask you the questions? So, okay, my first one is, it's kind of this one that Commissioner Weissmore was speaking to, that several commissioners brought up of like, what do we mean by equity, right? It was sort of, it was sort of this concern that it may have been pitted against other categories. What really do we mean by it? Yeah, maybe to start there.
Yeah, so, for the question of what we mean and what we mean by disproportionate impact, you know, I gave the example of the, you know, student groups who might be impacted, like African-American groups. But I think, you know, what we're, so, but I appreciate the push to say, okay, but what do we mean? And here in San Francisco, I mean, what it means is like, you know, I named certain neighborhoods that have been disproportionately impacted, right, where school closures happened. And so, I do, I mean, I understand the skepticism comes from the experience people have had. So, for me, what that would look like is, if what comes out of our recommendation is that only, you know, two neighborhoods are impacted, then we're not following through on our commitment, you know, to equity, right? And that doesn't mean, so that's, that's kind of on the, you know, the impact side. And then...
Can I, sorry, just can I follow up? Because I think, I heard Commissioner Weissmore say something different that had to do with access to power. Because I think, I heard Commissioner Weissman Ward say something different that had to do with access to power, right? Because if it's just two neighborhoods out of seven neighborhoods, that's different, right? Rather than two neighborhoods that, you know, are majority low-income, that experienced most of the school closures 10 years ago, which also relates to this question around historical inequities. I think, I think the board is wanting to hear a little more clarity around what, yeah, like, how we're thinking about that.
Yeah, I could just give, like, a hot take, maybe not a hot take, it's fine, it's being recorded. But if the two neighborhoods are Noe and Pak Heights, that might look different than if the two neighborhoods are the Mission and Bayview. So I, I don't think they, that's not the same, that conversation doesn't look the same to me.
Okay, yeah, no, thank you for, yeah, that, that is what it, if I wasn't clear, that's, that is what it means. And I think that's also what we're saying, when we talk about our definition of equity, it doesn't mean the, the same for everything, so you might see differences. And then to your point, if the differences are though, that the groups that have historically been, you know, negatively impacted are the ones who, who face it more, then we're not, that's not the kind of difference we're talking about. And, you know, and then I have said, and this is where I do think, I mean, it's going to be, this is what's gonna be challenging when we share the recommendations. I said very clearly, this is impacting the whole city. And when you look at where our kids live, right, and if we're talking about having more students go to school near where they live, it is going to impact some areas more than others. It might be unexpected, right? Because kids go to schools where there are fewer children who actually live near those schools, right? And that's why, I mean, you, the board has been, you know, also in our briefing, it said, like, making sure we're addressing enrollment policy is, is critical. The only one other area is gonna talk about is, which, again, I think Commissioner Lamb gave an example. Then, so that's like the impact area. Then there's also the, the terms of equity of what support's gonna be provided for those students who aren't impacted by this? And if those students who are impacted by it are already, you know, further behind, right? Because overall, we haven't done well educating, are they gonna get additional support, like tutoring? You know, and so, again, that's why we're coming back in August. This is really helpful to help shape what, what we need to share in August.
And I think Commissioner Lamb was also referring to sort of the systemic issue of schools serving high numbers of low-income kids with high needs that then have churn and turnover of educators, which means then kids don't get a good education there. Not through no fault of the educators, they're brand-new, right? We all, we all know that a first-year teacher, right, struggles often. If you have a school full of first-year teachers, then that school becomes perceived as a less good school, fewer families choose it, right, and it becomes this negative cycle. So I think the question is, how are we thinking about interrupting that, right?
Yeah, and I'll add a question that we've been asking ourselves too, right? So this has come up already, Commissioner Fisher has brought it up, and the, you know, and this is, some schools are able to raise funds that other schools don't have access to. So what we've been asking ourselves is, what are those funds actually providing at schools that make it, you know, the school seem more desirable than somewhere, somewhere else, right? Because we do intentionally direct funds to our lower, you know, to our schools that serve higher-needs students, but still, it's not necessarily translating into those types of experiences that, that families are saying like, oh yeah, this is what makes our school special. So that would be another example where we're looking at like, okay, what does that look like? So then when we come out, here's where, you know, where there's maybe additional resources or support.
So Commissioner Sanchez also asked about the DAC recommendation, and I know that has come up a bunch. What, do you wanna comment on that?
Yeah, so I think, you know, what I, why I asked for the discussion, what I hear you saying is, is the, the same tension we dealt with when trying to address this, right? So in our first survey, and if you can go to slide, if you can go to slide 19, we had the categories, but we didn't ask anything separately about the, the categories. And, but you can see from the initial responses, and we recognize, we've already talked about who's responding, right? So you could see from the initial responses that the equity category was scoring lower, right? And that if we just said, what are the top 10 or top seven criteria, maybe none of them would be included. So we intentionally did not ask our community to weight equity excellence and the, the categories because we thought they would be doing what it said, pitting against each other. Now, at the same time, I feel like maybe the unintended consequence of that, that DAC picked up on, was, well, wait a second, though, if we're saying this is a value that we need to lift up, what are the ways to lift it up? And so DAC did, again, they, they spent 30 hours of their own time, so they got a little leeway, and they got to actually weight the categories. And when they did, it came, equity came out higher. It wasn't necessarily unanimous, but the consensus of the group was, you know, higher, even up to 80%. And so then we followed through, didn't, but wanna be transparent, didn't adopt exactly what they said because we felt like, you know, the, the effective use of resources and the excellence categories were important to consider. And so, but, but giving equity twice the level, twice the weight demonstrates a significant commitment there while still holding on to these values that are, you know, we feel like need to be incorporated into the criteria to help us make decisions.
So let me ask, before we move on, do you feel like, as superintendent, you have a good enough sense of what the board standard around equity is to where you're able to bring us recommendations that you think will support?
I do, and, you know, I've said this in some of our briefings, I said this in some of our community meetings too, that to some extent, I, I feel like I do, but the proof will be when, when the recommendations come forward. But I do have a sense that I know, again, if the recommendations, you know, are, you know, dis, you know, are more significantly impacting our, you know, African-American, Latino students, whatever, you know, qualifying, you know, language around that, that, well, we can't do this, we can't do that, I got a sense that for this board, that's not gonna be acceptable. Or if the recommendations can don't, you know, address this proximity and the density of our, of our schools and our enrollment policies, I mean, how we've incentivized students to leave neighborhoods, to go to other schools, that you're, you're not gonna be, you know, appreciative of that. So I really appreciate that question, and so I do feel like, yes, and then really the proof is gonna come when we, we bring forward the recommendations.
Okay, so I'm gonna, if it's okay, if I don't have any strong objections, I wanna move forward to the last two topics, which is enrollment, policy, and facilities, and then give everybody a chance to comment at the end if there's stuff that was missed, just given the time. Let's do enrollment, policy, and facilities, and then see if it gets, if it's, we need to come back to it. Okay, so enrollment, there was a question around, and again, I know I've forgotten who brought it up. Okay, do you wanna frame it?
It was just more around the admissions policy, given that this is complex in itself, let alone with the implementation of an enrollment policy. And we don't have to do this now, but I know that staff have been working on what that implementation timing might look like, but would like to have, see more detail, because, because I think families are gonna be, it's gonna be top of mind for them. And we've heard that throughout the town halls that we're at as well.
And to build on that, before you answer Dr. Wayne, as you mentioned, we had the resolution from 2020. We also had a separate resolution from 2018. This topic has been attempted multiple, multiple times, but there are a lot of complexities, like making sure if we're gonna develop zones, that we have language pathways and special education programs and all that in the zones, that we account for the disparity in the condition of the facilities. Like, there's all this that we try to do, but we weren't able to successfully get there in the past, so what will be different this time?
Yeah.
And I think to overlay on that, it goes back to the criteria that we're looking at, which is access to programs. And that's what I had heard consistently throughout the, the admissions policy. You know, we also went through pretty intensive community engagement. So that's gonna be top of mind to families of how we're delivering on that.
Yeah, so let me name a few things that, to look for, and I think that will be different. So one is, when the zone policy passed, this was before my time, but I've learned about it, it was the idea of kind of having some larger zones, that that's where what you're describing, Commissioner Fisher, ran into the issues of like, you know, setting it up in a way that met all those criteria of proximity, predictability, diversity, and programs was creating, you know, maybe, you know, park crossings and, you know, things that weren't, weren't going to work. So we are, so we're looking at, you know, different configurations and not limiting ourselves to the, you know, the policy that, you know, had just maybe four or five zones for all of our elementary schools. Really looking, and again, because we've heard so much how that proximity matters. Then you should be looking for, and we're thinking, okay, what does this mean? And where do we find the balance between citywide programs versus neighborhood programs, right? Because our K8s are citywide, and all of our language programs are citywide. Do they need to all be citywide in, in that way? So that's what we're, we're asking ourselves. And then three, can we provide in our enrollment process, you know, you heard me say that you, you know, right now for families, it is really, you know, one of 72 to some extent. I mean, yes, there's clear on the tiebreakers and all that, but it is a pure lottery. Not having the lottery, and so then what's the, the role where people can have that predictability? Okay, I know I'm gonna be assigned to this school, now what are my options if I wanna choose something differently? But, but the assignment is set versus, you know, I'm gonna figure out all, you know, all of, all of my options. And so that's what, that's what you could look, that's what you should be looking for, and like, we're, we're considering for this to be different. Oh, the one other thing is, then, oh, I wanna speak to the timing question you asked too. So the other thing is, you know, we are going to be looking at, but is, you know, even at the secondary level, like, there seems to have been some success with the middle school feeder patterns. What that, might that look like if that got extended? So now for timeline, here's a tricky piece. The way we do enrollment is, you know, we start early, right? So we want to come out with the plan, so our community has a clear picture of the plan. That, we'll need a transition year, though, to implement that. So we'll need, we'll, we'll have more details on what that looks like. And then same thing, if we're gonna do anything for high school, that would come after elementary school. They think that's the first place we need to start. But we do wanna look at that whole picture. I mean, this is, you know, a generational shift we're making for the next 20 years. As we said, we, we don't wanna be back here because of enrollment, and we don't wanna be back here because of our policies. I, I was looking at our historian, I mean, they, you know, they tried to get involved every, you know, every few years. We haven't found the right recipe, we wanna, you know, really try to get it right. And that's what we think needs to be done to do that.
Great. Let's talk about facilities, use of facilities that get closed or merged into another place so that, that building is no longer used. Is there a specific question, or you wanna frame it? Go ahead.
Well, I think you get it, we've talked about it.
So there's, so how do we wanna use our buildings? So, and, and what Commissioner Sanchez has talked about is making sure they're for community benefit. So one thing I wanna say, are two, two things we're very clear on. One, we are not interested in selling our properties, right? We wanna give ourselves that flexibility. Selling properties, you only get one-time funds that you can use only for facilities, you know, other way, generating revenue through leases or other ways, we can use it for ongoing. Two, there, we are not intending in any way to have our properties used by charter schools or other kind of, any other private organization. That, that is not, you know, that is not part of our plans. And in fact, we, you know, signed on to legislation that we hope passes that says if districts close schools, that it's actually five years before even charters can consider coming in. So what will they be used for? So we're looking at multiple things. So one is, we do, we did already, the board approved expanding teacher housing, educator housing. We got nine, over 900 applicants for 135 spots in the first one. So we have some room to grow for that, yeah. That's gonna be applauded for that. And then, secondly, is then, it, support, really wanna use a lot of it for supporting our own students or, and programs for our students, where we can start to be creative. So two areas are the ones you two already named. So one is in early education, so, and while they're like our own or not, you know, they all belong to us in the city when they're under five. And so, you know, we know that the Department of Early Childhood is, is expanding. And then also special education programs, right? And where, how can we do, use our facilities better for that? So we wanna have more, you know, one, to support our, our needs. And then also, one of our needs is, is having a swing site when we're doing renovations, right? We are going for another bond, we already have schools in the pipeline. They don't have, we've heard a lot of concerns, like Buena Vista Horseman doesn't have a place to go because we have, you know, we don't have the space, you know, we wanna have swing sites. The last thing I'll say, I know I've shared a lot, but is, is, then where are there other partnerships to be had where we have community-based organizations that one program's in our school already, and maybe would do well with having, you know, having a site to run them out of? And what you should, last thing, sorry, what you should expect it, we're not gonna have like signed MOUs when we come in, in September and December with the plan, but it's gonna be more than just these intentions. I, I have asked the team, like, we wanna identify who the potential partners are so they can be named, while then we work, work through those. So it's gonna be somewhere between just, oh, we wanna work with DEC, or we wanna work with the CBO, to, it's not gonna be, we have the MOU, but somewhere in between there is what you should look for.
Superintendent, thank you for that. I also just like to request, because I often hear from parents and families and educators and providers around the importance around, you know, how can our schools also be available as community assets, like for sports, right? And how tough it is to find gyms and, yeah, and just overall athletic space. And then also certainly with our arts and music, so just those additional considerations.
Excellent. Commissioner Boggs, what was the question or point around criteria that you wanted to bring up?
Yeah, I, I think just trying, I think to get more clarity around the measures that are being used to calculate the historical inequities and kind of, I think essentially like, what we view as like the benefit of that and how that kind of reflects kind of what we want to address within equities, of seeing that we're using the Opportunity Insights Labs Upward Mobility Index that looks at neighborhoods.
Great, and before you answer that, are there other questions or issues that have not come up that folks wanna raise?
Just one other clarif, there, I'm just gonna stop talking tonight. One other clarification, no, I'm not, I don't even know why I said that. One other clarification about the criteria is teacher turnover. I thought we discussed removing that at the DAC because we were concerned that Empower had an outsized impact on that. So just love some clarification on that.
Any other issues, questions, comments that folks wanna bring up? Again, this is not the last time we'll talk about this, but...
Okay, so I will just make my last comments then, because I, I wanted to give a whole bunch of appreciations, you know, for this process. So I, we'll have closing...
Do you wanna do that? Do you wanna him to answer these questions?
Yeah.
And then, okay, so let's do that, and then if there's any final, quick, brief, closing comments, one minute each, maybe. So let's let the superintendent answer these last two questions, though. First, clarity around historical inequities and criteria, the Opportunity Insight Lab, and then the teacher turnover.
Okay. Yeah, so the, Dr. Connaught, can you speak a bit more about the Opportunities Insight Lab metric? I think... Yeah. Yeah, if you can just speak to it briefly. I was just trying to give a quick, a quick response.
Yeah.
Okay, well, so this is Dr. Perrin, who...
I'd actually, I'm gonna actually interrupt, so, sorry. So we don't actually need a long explanation.
Yeah.
I think we just wanna know real quick at a high level, and if it's not possible, I would recommend we wait. Because this, really, a lot of these clarifying questions probably we already should have had, so, sorry, don't wanna...
Yeah, yeah, so, no, I, I think is, again, it's a way to look at how neighborhoods have been impacted through a variety of measures that, that capture whether they have the same kind of, you know, again, opportunities in terms of what access they have to resources in their neighborhood compared to other areas. And so that's what we're using because, mainly because we needed a quantifiable measure to be able to incorporate.
And again, just a thought, so I guess, could you just draw the connection between neighborhoods and schools? And just, I guess, what we see as the link and how that is a powerful...
Yeah, so if, yeah, so we're seeing that if a school is in a neighborhood that scores higher, low, whatever, that, you know, you know, that has less opportunity and is more severely impacted by the, these historical inequities, we're gonna say they're actually less likely to be, to be closed because we want to, I mean, to the point Commissioner Weissman Ward was making earlier, we wanna make sure we're supporting those with, you know, those who have been furthest from opportunity and furthest from power.
So we will actually be looking at each student in the school that goes to that school and seeing what zip code they come from, and what is the opportunity for each student.
Yeah, thanks, and I, the reason I'm trying to cut this short is not because this is an important information, but we've been, this is, this information's been out there for several... information, but we've been, this is, this information's been out there for several months. And so this is really the opportunity for the board to like give high-level direction to the superintendent. And so that's why I just don't want to get caught on the details and have the meeting go on forever. That's all.
Okay. And then for the second one that was, uh, brought up, so I would say, thank you, Dr. Perrin, but we're good, we're, we're good and appreciate your support of this process. Um, the second one that was, um, brought up was the, oh, the teacher turnover. And so with the teacher turnover, Dr. Connaught, where were we with that?
Yeah, so the teacher turnover reads that we have, that we are using is from the 21-22 school year. And this is what we'll be using in our calculation. That is the most reliable valid information that we have on teacher turnover.
No, I think the question was that the DAC recommended taking it out or something? Is that?
Is that what it is?
Then, is that right, Commissioner Fisher? Were you, that was not?
Let me go back and find my exact notes and I'll forward them later.
Yeah.
Rather than turning it into a huge conversation.
I think the bigger, more important.
I would have to go through pages of notes to find the exact comment.
Yeah. And I think the more important point here is none of these individual criteria are going to make or break a school's rating. And even a school's rating is not going to determine on its own whether or not it's closed, merged, or co-located. So I think that's why I don't want to get sort of down a rabbit hole of all these details. It was really important work and I think that's why we had the DAC. That's why we had, you know, several months of kind of process around it. So, um, that's my, is that?
Yeah.
That's the only reason why I'm, why I'm sort of encouraging us to stay at a high level here. So I just want to ask if colleagues have up to, if we can keep it to a minute, that'd be great, because we really should move on. And we're going to talk about this a lot this fall as well. So, so I want to offer an opportunity for final kind of wrap-up. If you want to leave anything in the superintendent's mind, right? Cause he's, now they're going to go off and consult and do their work to, to come up with some recommendations for us. So your last opportunity to, to leave those thoughts in, in terms of this meeting, is that all right if we just go around and see if everyone wants to?
Teacher turnover?
Yeah. Can you do that? That'd be great. Thank you. All right. Do you want to start? Do you want to? Let's start down here with Commissioner Bogus.
Do you need to keep it to a minute?
That'd be great.
We'll see. Um, I think for me, I think the big takeaways are really centered around how do we really create authentic equity for marginalized communities in this process? And how do we do a better job than we've done already? How do we create a higher standard of both engagement, understanding, uh, for communities? And how do we balance out the historical inequities? I think really around the scoring, it seems to me that we've created a neutral criteria for an un-neutral calculation, where all the schools have different resources and assets based off privilege, based off bias, based off historical inequities. And that's not a part of the process at all. It's left to the art aspect, which makes me see less value in the composition score and the way that it's being calculated, as well as the way the individual measures, measure equity, don't seem to match with my vision of equity or my definition, or I feel that the definition that the district has historically had and has centered. And so I do appreciate the commitment to equity, but it does feel really similar to where we have been before. And I'm really interested in seeing how this transitions to something that's more authentic and more tangible for folks.
Let's go to President Matamadi.
Hi, all. Um, I've been following along and I really just want to appreciate the amount of effort that was put into, um, into gathering all the information that brought us to this moment, both from the public, district advisory committee, and, um, from staff's hard work. And I also just want to remind or let the, let folks know, um, there was a number of us that were, had the, um, opportunity to go to, to participate in a conference with other districts that have gone through this process or are about to. I, I want to unders- underscore that we, um, we're not unique. SFUSD is not unique where, where we are with our, um, our, you know, our resource constraints increasing and also declining enrollment and, you know, all the things. And every district that's gone through this is, you know, it's been difficult, but it was also really clear that SFUSD has done a significant, um, amount of upfront work that many, many districts did not go through and typically have not gone through. Um, and so we are at the forefront of doing the work differently, um, in a student-centered manner. And I really appreciate the board's commitment to focusing on students and thinking through all the different, um, you know, it's not just about buildings. It's not, this is not just about, you know, trying to save money because there are costs associated with this that we know and huge student and educator and family impacts. But I just really, really want to thank staff for clearly laying out the schedule and the process for decision-making and community input, um, going forward. And that's really where my focus is, is, is looking forward and ensuring that our school sites are involved in this process of input and that our students are at the center. And what I've heard from staff and what I've heard from commissioners, um, is, reflects that. So thank you for everyone's, um, you know, comments this evening and, and that's, that's what I've got to say. So I appreciate the opportunity to, um, to help, help close out this item, hopefully.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Fisher, closing comments.
All right, I just started a timer for myself. Um, yay, okay. Thanks and appreciations. Thanks to everyone who was here giving comment. Thanks to anyone who attended a meeting. Thanks to everyone who completed the survey. Thanks to all the communities that organized, RK8, we heard from you. Thank you. Thanks to Dr. Connaught for being a thought partner throughout the process. Really appreciate you. We need to recognize that this is not part of a cost-saving measures. In fact, we know this is going to be painful. It's going to cost a lot. We need to be transparent with the communities. As far as art versus science, um, to follow up on what Commissioner Bogus said, um, the more we can bake into the science and not leave to art, the more transparent and honest we'll be able to be with communities throughout and, um, and hopefully use this process to not repeat the harms of the past. And I'll close with some of the comments that we heard from our students here at the beginning of the meeting. They have a fear of segregation and being separated from friends. Their education is important. We are accountable to them, the students. We as a system are the problem, not the students. The students need to be and want to be engaged in the process. We need to weight equity in a way that makes us more accountable and makes them feel more included and relevant. Our students are more than numbers on an attendance list. They are the ones facing and feeling the consequences, so their input, impact needs to be taken into account and they are the future. I'm done.
Just closing, a big thanks to our community, our broad SFUSD community for engaging in this process. And thank you to our staff that I know have poured endless hours into getting us where we are today and just so much more, many, many more hundreds and hundreds of hours that are going to be coming forward in order to put the most thoughtful, transparent processes and details forward, because our students and families and staff are really counting on us for that. I do want to know in, in final closing words for the superintendent, um, for consideration around and some of the feedback, as you get ready for the mandatory admin institute, the encouragement of a time for collaboration and engagement of administrators rather than presentation. I think I, we've heard time and time again over the last several years, um, is the importance of being brought into a conversation, not only being told this is how it's going to happen. And they're going to be instrumental of being the ambassadors of the face-to-face of carrying out, um, the decisions from the superintendent's plans, as well as ultimately the policy decisions that are going to be, uh, approved ultimately here at, um, at the DIAs and by board members. So, um, just really encouraging the superintendent and the staff, um, in the coming month as you plan for that institute, um, of how it's going to, um, you know, create a more sense of, um, engagement and, um, a path forward collectively.
Yeah, a lot of slide decks of those. Um, I guess I'd say, um, that to avoid the past's prologue or to avoid our own history in the city, we owe it to ourselves and to everybody in the city to have a process that doesn't affect black and brown kids and families the way it did back in the early 2000s. We closed more than 10 schools in a relatively short span of time, starting with Macatee High School, then Ben Franklin Middle School, Luther Bridge Burbank Middle School, John Sweat right across the street, Golden Gate, uh, Golarre Davis, 21st Century, a lot of schools were closed, the vast majority of whom, which were serving black and brown families. It helped to, um, speed along the process of, of African-American families leaving our city, to the point where, you know, 2000, the, this, the city was 15% African-American, now it's about 4% or 5%. And that was a huge, um, help out of the city by closing the community hubs, the support systems, uh, for African-American families. So that's why I've, I've been talking about, and we've been talking about a lot, the equity aspect of this process. So the proof will be in the pudding when the list is brought to the school board.
I'll just say thank you to, um, to staff for the many hours, thanks to the DAC, um, thanks to community for continuing to provide input. And, um, it's not going to be an easy process, but I think we're committed to trying to do right by community and get it done as best as we can.
All right. Thanks so much to all of my colleagues for this.
Knocked his car and furiously confronted him. Don't flash your lights, it's dangerous. He shouted warning of accidents and danger to his family.
Seems to be a, seem a problem. Oh, is it okay? All right. Um, thanks to my colleagues for those questions and comments. And again, I think the question to the superintendent, maybe I, with the one I asked earlier, I'll just sort of wrap it up by repeating that. Do you have what you need to bring us something that you think that the board will support?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. Um, and again, to the community, you could see, this is part of our role, I think constructive role as a governance team, working with the superintendent to reflect the vision and values of the community. And I hope that folks hear a lot of the things that have been reflected in public comments and other places, coming from board members, asking the superintendent and his team to really address those. And I know they want to as well. So that's kind of part of the, how this process is supposed to, supposed to work. Um, all right, we're going to move on to item, uh, G, or the section G, which is our action items for tonight. And the first, we have, I think, eight, if I'm not wrong, but the first five of them are all related, items G1 through G5. Um, and so I'm going to ask for a motion in a second on these five items, um, which is the fiscal stabilization plan, the local control and accountability plan for both the county office and the San Francisco Unified School District, the recommended budget for 24-25, the expenditure plan for the fiscal year 24-25 education protection out, account, and the approval of the Public Education and Richment Fund expenditure plan for 24-25. All five of those items, I'm going to ask for a motion in a second on them, um, together so that we can discuss them together. And then we'll have separate votes on each one, if that's appropriate. If it's not, I'll do it separately, but we were, they're all related items. I'm, I'm looking at our general counsel for confirmation, because we discussed this, but not with him. We, we wanted to discuss them all together and then have separate votes. Is that permissible?
To be honest, this is the first time I've ever seen this. I've attended probably thousands of meetings. I've never seen this before, but I also don't see why you can't discuss them so long as you, at the end of the day, take a separate vote on each.
In that case, so moved.
Okay, so is there a second?
Second.
So that, just to be clear, that was, Commissioner Sanchez moved and Commissioner Lamb seconded all five, each of the five.
That was happening.
Yeah, G1 through G5.
And I'd like to amend just for clarity as to why, what makes this kind of work is that public comment occurred at the beginning of the meeting, right? And so just technically speaking, the public was given its opportunity to address this before you're even allowed to discuss. So I'm just rounding that out for those that keep watch.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. And we, and we could, it was just because we could have a discussion on each one separately, but there's so much interrelatedness that we thought we would discuss and then take separate votes, so. So I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent, but before I do that, I want to just remind my colleagues that these are all action items. So unlike the last section, we're not going to encourage discussion because these are items we've discussed before as a board. Um, I mean, we'll have, we will have opportunity for discussion for board members, but we're going to do the round robin, um, because we're really trying to get to a decision point. So Superintendent Wayne.
Uh, thank you, yes. And, and I will say my previous district, through our board docs, we were able to kind of bundle the items, but here they're listed separately, so I appreciate, you know, but they are all connected because it's our LCAP. It's our budget that first requires a fiscal stabilization plan, and then it's our, uh, required education protection act, and then it's, um, our PIF, uh, plan as well. And so I actually want to speak, start off with the LCAP. Uh, we don't have a separate presentation from, uh, the LCAP. We spent a meaningful amount of time hearing from members of our LCAP advisory committee and Mr. Tim Burke, um, our LCAP, uh, director, on what, um, is in the LCAP. But we did say from that meeting, at that meeting, that this was the first reading and there may be some revisions. So I did want to just highlight some, some shifts that have been made. In the annual, um, update section, we shifted from describing the results to really identifying where in the LCAP goals and actions sections, we are addressing how we plan to improve student outcomes and experience based on the results, right? Because you're supposed to say each year, what did we do before? We'll hear the results, but now we're saying, what are we doing with that? Um, and then for the measuring and reporting results, based on some feedback from CDE's review, we have more specific numerical baseline data, um, that we're using around our, our targets, um, and particularly related to way, to the way the dashboard, you know, the California dashboard is, uh, used to measure district's project, progress. Then, um, we, um, added an equity multiplier goal and actions for the eight total SFUSD County Office of Education schools that will receive this additional state funding. So when you get, we're getting some additional state funding, so we want to be clear on what actions are going to be supported by that funding. And then, um, last, we just tried to provide still even more clarity around that alignment piece, which we know we talked about a lot, still ways to go, but, um, you know, really in the increased or improved services section, we added budget information to the, be clear on like what, how we're using the base, and then the supplemental and concentration grants, and then the additional 15% of LCFF concentration grants. So, uh, um, so not any major changes to the strategies, but felt like it was, uh, worth highlighting some of the shifts that were made and from the feedback we got from this discussion, um, around alignment, as well as the CDE's, uh, review and what's required from the state. So that's the LCAP. Normally we would have the LCAP and then budget go next, but first we have our fiscal stabilization plan. We do want to spend a few minutes talking about this because we attached it at the la- we attached the draft at the last, um, at the first reading. Since then, um, we have refined the two documents that were attached and added a third document. So there's three documents attached to the fiscal stabilization plan. A board resolution, um, a fiscal stabilization narrative, plan narrative, and then the specific reductions we're proposing for 25-26 and 26-27 to eliminate deficit spending. Uh, the Board of Education may recall that you approved a resolution in 23-24 that laid out, um, uh, our commitment to engaging in budget balancing solutions to start working towards eliminating the, the, um, structural deficit. And that resolution, um, named some generic actions that would be, our general actions that would be taken. We followed through on those and did, um, identify budget balancing solutions from our unrestricted general fund for 103 million. But since we have not eliminated our structural deficit to go with the plan we're submitting to the state, it's important that we have this resolution that continues that commitment. This time though, you see it's much more specific what we're going to do and actually putting a ti- a date, um, when we're eliminating deficit spending, thus by the 26-27 school year. So the resolution, think of it as, as, at our ad hoc, Mr. Duchon called it like the preamble to the specifics of the plan, but like saying, here, here's what the board's committing to do. So then the narrative, you have the long narrative, we went over each section at our ad hoc, but just wanted, uh, for the full board and the, the community to hear, um, what's in that fiscal stabilization plan narrative. So Dr. Clark, um, who, uh, helped to take the lead on putting this together is going to share.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Superintendent Wayne. In the packet you-
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Superintendent Wayne. In the packet, you have a copy of the fiscal stabilization plan that, if approved tonight, will be submitted to the California Department of Education. They've received a draft copy, as well as that draft copy went to the fiscal advisors. The plan includes an executive summary. It highlights the background that goes back to 2018, when the district first started to see signs of fiscal distress. It highlights the plan that Dr. Wayne previously discussed, which was last year's plan. And then it brings us up to date as of July 2024. Included in the plan is responses to CDE's opinions and concerns about the district, as well as recommendations and the district's responses to those recommendations. I mean, builds upon what happened last year, and then again, brings us to the current year. In addition to that, there is a section that highlights the fiscal health risk analysis that was performed by FICMAT, as well as those recommendations. And then, last but not least, this plan includes what we call Phase Two of the fiscal stabilization plan, which is updated as of June 2024. Overall, this plan also includes, as you see on the screen, a detailed plan of expenditures that is broken out by major object codes, not only for 2425, but for 2526 and 2627. For 2526, there's an additional $113 million of reductions that have been identified. And then, the remaining $13 million for 2627. As Dr. Wayne indicated, the attachments are there. But that's the overall gist of the documents, and we went over them through the ad hoc. I'll stop now to see if there are any questions.
Actually, here, let's just finish before the questions. So, that's the narrative. And then, what CDE has required, and this has been where, and I really want to appreciate, Mr. Duchesne appreciated the team, but the work that's happened over the last three or four weeks, is doing something that is important, but is not, has not typically been done by districts, but is actually identifying reductions in 2526. Because as a reminder, this is one of the reasons why we ended up in the negative certification, is we had, we had generic, I had identified basically a placeholder of saying, we will make these reductions. And they said, you know what? We need to see specifics for us to really know that you're going to do this. So, our financial services officer, Jackie Chen, is just going to explain how those specifics are organized.
The team has already identified 535 FTEs, and divided by job classification, and the funding resources. And we have been already sent the details to the CDE advisors and CDE to review, and attached with, on the, on the board agenda item. And you can see there's 113 million in total, 2526 year, and which represent 535 full-time employee. And then, 2627 year, around the $13 million with 82 full-time employee as well.
And so, so this is the components of our fiscal stabilization plan. And then, for, so that's, that's, so you'll be voting on that. And you notice on the agenda, it's prior to the adoption of the budget, because what CD has asked, is they want to see that commitment explicitly around these reductions before putting it into, before accepting the budget. And then, for the budget, so basically, we had the, you know, long conversation on May 7th about our budget. We had the first reading of our budget. And then, we've had four, have we had four ad hoc, three ad hoc committees, meetings about them. So, there's not much new information in the budget. What you will see new in it, and what's attached in the, in the presentation, is that the specific reductions that Ms. Chen just described are actually now in the object code as appropriate in the multiple-year projection, right? Because that's where we had the issues. We knew we were going to deficit spend in 2425. But in 2526 and 2627, that's where we needed to eliminate, the, finish eliminating the deficit. And so, CDE wanted to see those specific reductions in there. So, those are in there. And then, if Ms. Chen, so I'm not going to ask you to do that presentation. If you can give like a one paragraph summary of what the education protection act is, and then, I'll end with PIF.
Of the, sorry, forgot. The EPA funding is a component of the state total LCFF. It is a voter approved additional personal income tax to support the schools and county of education. And the EPA funds cannot be used for the administrator's salary and the benefit, or any other administrative cost. So, attached at the board agenda item, and the district staffing are recommended to use the fund to pay around 114 classroom teachers' salary and benefit in 2425 year. It is required for the board's approval during a public meeting.
Yeah. So, this, you approved last year. It's approved every year. This is more of a compliance approval that's needed. And then, lastly, for the PIF funding, we had a, you know, a tough discussion around the PIF funding, you know, appreciating the resources it brings. But really, you know, heard from the board, the challenge of, how is the PIF funding aligned to our goals and guardrails? And, you know, how is it, you know, how are we, you know, we produced the long report around it. But how are we really integrating those expenditures into our overall approach to the student educational experience? So, there's the meeting of goals and guardrails, and then like the science, sorry, science, sports, libraries, art, and music experiences. So, what's attached, not for action, but, but what you're approving is the PIF expenditure plan. So, we are asking you to approve the plan as is. But we attached a memo that makes a few key points. One, it notes that, the plan can be changed, you know, during the year. We're actually going to communicate explicitly with the city controller's office that the board approved this plan, but they asked us for greater alignment. And so, as that comes, we'll communicate with you where there might be adjustments. Two, we share a proposal for, that we, on how, how to help create that alignment. And that's really, we should, as a district, have one, one plan. And that, you know, we have our goals and guardrails, and that plan is our LCAP. And we, you know, this year, I think, made a lot of progress on developing an LCAP that's aligned to our goals and guardrails, and that had, you know, meaningful conversations with our new LCAP advisory committee. And so, what we proposed is that PIF gets incorporated into the LCAP process. And so, and that's, to some extent, what the PIF CAC, one of their recommendations, or one of their questions was, like, how does all this fit into where we're going as a district? And so, what we'll, what we'll do is have that incorporated into LCAP. We'll actually ask two members of the PIF CAC to serve on the LCAP advisory. But then, we're going to go to the PIF CAC and say, okay, you know, here's how, you know, here's how we're working towards alignment. So, let's talk about your role and your responsibilities, right? Because I think we heard a little of the frustration of like, well, what, what are we trying to do? So, rather than answer that at a board meeting, we said, let's go to their meeting, and let's have that, have that discussion. So, you know, so, anything is still in compliance with how PIF is, is organized. But that is a shift, you know, we call it our, the realignment proposal, of how we shift PIF into LCAP. So, that's what we're planning for next year. Okay. So, I think those are the five items. So, you can start anywhere. There's the fiscal stabilization plan, PIF.
So, here's our, well, here's our process. So, what I'm going to do is a round robin, where everyone gets two minutes to either make a statement or ask questions. If we complete that, and there's still more discussion that we want to have, we can decide to go again. But I want to try to like, because again, we, these are, this is, these are all decision points. So, there's not as much of a need for lengthy board discussion.
Can I ask a clarifying question about PIF being, the PIF CAC being rolled into the LCAP? Wait, is that?
I'm going to start the timers, which is fine. We can extend it if necessary.
No, I just, is that part of the action, or is that a recommendation? Is that, that's what I'm trying to understand. That's not something that's on our action agenda tonight.
You don't need to vote for that. That's something we're going to operationalize. And we're not, so, to be clear, we're, we're going to ask the PIF CAC to send, they'll identify the two members they want to be on the LCAP advisory committee. And then, we're going to meet with the PIF CAC about their, you know, what it looks like for them moving forward.
Do you want to go?
Yeah, I have huge concerns about that. Having sat on the LCAP task force for many years, it's, it takes, it takes folks years to learn how to understand and read the LCAP. I mean, these are two separate funding sources that each are large enough that they deserve their own oversight and accountability mechanism. And if we have concerns about the oversight and accountability mechanism of each of these individually, to me, that doesn't say, put them together. It says, beef up the accountability of both. So, I, I have huge reservations about the two of them being combined. Huge, huge. No, that's, I'll, I'll let everyone else comment on other things. I've taken up enough of the time tonight.
I will be very brief. I think we've had a lot of discussion in both the ad hoc committees and at our last meeting on the budget. Appreciate, continue to appreciate all the work that y'all are doing. I will just say, in response to Commissioner Fisher, I don't, I don't, I didn't hear this as a concern about accountability, as opposed to wanting to make sure that there's meaningful intentional alignment, and not working in silos. So, that would be my response. And that's it for the other items.
Thank you. I think the question, I guess, I had was, I guess, to just put a little bit more context to the pending reductions that are coming, that are kind of planned out. I know we have them kind of listed out by their code, which kind of gives us a reference point of kind of what positions in the district and what roles they play. But I guess, thinking about it from a site level, what, I think, kind of insight or direction do we have, not for individual sites, but for sites in general, about kind of what to expect over kind of the course of this stabilization, knowing that there's a lot of pieces moving. But I think just any more clarity, as well as if there's any shift in expectations of what individual sites are being asked to accomplish or produce, kind of giving these staffing reductions and other fiscal reductions at the site.
Yeah, I can answer that briefly. There, I mean, yeah, the, so, we've named what needs to happen in 2526. And, and we've talked with our advisors. It will evolve, but the evolving needs to be tracked, right? So that we're still following. But, but really, the main thrust is going to be the big shift in working with our schools, is defining what is core. And then, what outside of core do we want to continue to supplement? So, an example, I think you heard this at the ad hoc, but I'll, I'll say, is like, we, you know, as we've started the alignment, we can afford in our unrestricted general fund 70 counselors. That would have our secondary counselor-to-student ratio at 350 to 1, which is still better than the 450 to 1 state average, but is not where we are now, because we have 160 counselors, right? But looking at what they're doing, and they're, some have caseloads, some don't have caseloads. And so, thinking through like, okay, what are we using our counselors for? And, you know, is this where we want to invest? And so, if so, then we're going to have less supplemental funding for other areas? Or do we want to invest somewhere else? So, that, that's what we need to work through. And it really is going to be defining that core that will be critical, that we haven't done in the past.
I guess, just, I appreciate that. And I guess, the clarity, I guess, I was looking for, that I guess I still am looking for, is then, should sites and families not expect to necessarily know what kind of changes they're going to see, because there's a larger shift happening in what is like the core responsibilities of staffing at school sites? And I guess, if that is the case, is it, is it fair for families to assume that the way their schools currently staff will not be the same as we move forward, and that they will see and engage in those changes that happen at the school site? I guess, I'm curious of the communication with families from site leaders, and kind of how all those things are going to be kind of mapped out as we kind of move through this.
Yeah, I think it's, so, yes. And I think, what you're highlighting then is, we're not at the level yet where like, here's the specific impact to your site. And so, we need to get there. And also engage some with the site, because some of the funding is how, you know, sites decide to use it through their school site councils and their school plans. So, does need to be that, that dialogue. But yeah, I think, I appreciate that, yes, we do need to be clear, there's going to be an impact to this.
Great. Commissioner Lamb, did you have comments?
Yeah, I just want to comment about the PIF. I am glad to see greater alignment between the LCAP and PIF specifically around VVGG, because I had not, you know, it's certainly both, as individual board members raised that, as long, as well as advisory committee. I think, so I'll be certainly be intrigued around monitoring the discussion, particularly, particularly on the role of the PIF CAC moving forward, as well as discussions that are happening at City Hall around possible adjustments to the charter amendment, and looking at how city departments are being impactful for their intent of the PIF dollars, as well as the school district is part of that review of that charter, and the abilities for the district to talk about the impact of its work. So, I'm looking forward to the alignment work ahead.
A follow-up on that? Okay.
Yeah, just, I, to follow up on Commissioner Lamb's question, I would love to learn more about what is actually, like, I'd love to learn the details of the PIF CAC and LCAP task force. What is being proposed here? What's, is there, where, where's that data? Where's the information about what the new alignment would potentially look like, or?
Yeah, so, in terms of?
Is it outlined somewhere, like the?
No, but I think you can look at the LCAP as a model, because PIF isn't organized that way, right? The way PIF is organized is by program, and then, what the program, you know, outcomes is doing. LCAP is organized now with our changes by goal and guardrail. And some of some, and then some of the other LCAP required activities.
I mean, the change in structure?
Yeah.
Like, the change in, like, is there going to be an official change in reporting structure, like PIF will fall under? Like, help me, where, where is that outlined, the changes?
So, that, we, we'd still be working on, but what I, we put in the realignment proposals, we'd still submit a budget and a report to the city. City has not dictated, and neither has our own resolution, what format that looks like. So, that's what we're saying, is the formatting of the reporting would mirror more the LCAP than, than how we do it. And so, hopefully, you could hear when what I was saying, is why mirroring LCAP will help create greater alignment, because the LCAP is now aligned to that, is not program, is aligned to the goals and guardrails, is not program-based. Right now, our PIF plan is always presented, and here's the, you know, number of programs that we're, we're doing. And of course, you know, they meant, they speak to what, what they're trying to accomplish with those programs. But they don't, they didn't get organized first with the goals and guardrails in mind, you know? And you heard in the discussion, that a lot of it gets rolled over. We want to start with, okay, how is this aligned to goals and guardrails? And if I can just, I think what I've heard from you is, just to say, is again, the, you know, the concern around, for you, when I hear you say accountability, is how are we being transparent and communicating with invested community members in what we're doing? And that's why we want to talk, actually have a conversation with the PIF CAC. Because I do feel like, not I feel like, I mean, what we heard from them was, their role and responsibilities aren't always clear. And it feels like we're sending off feedback, and who's really responsible for this? So, that's why having that conversation is important. And as I said, it's a conversation that needs to happen with them, not, you know, not, not here. They're, they're the ones who've given their time to do this.
Thank you for naming that. We heard that loud and clear at our last meeting. That was actually a big part of my push, too, in understanding is where the decision-making is actually occurring. And so, before we have that hammered out, and, and aspirationally, what that will look like in the future, I guess, I'm really concerned that, that's what I'm trying to understand, is what we're talking about with the alignment between LCAP task force and PIF. Like, until we know more about what both are doing now versus what they should be doing, I think it's premature to do any consolidation or anything. So, I just want to make sure that I'm not misinterpreting. Like, we're not talking, we're not talking about moving the PIF CAC under the LCAP task.
Can I, can I say something here?
The only thing we're.
Because we haven't completed the round robin, and I'm.
Sorry, you're right. Sorry, you're right.
Yeah, and I, I was, oh, sorry, I was going to call on you, President Matomadi.
Oh, yeah, I was just going to ask that if, if we do want to, if commissioners do want to reopen, that's one thing, but if we could all please have an opportunity to speak prior to reopening, that would be great.
Sorry, that was my fault. And what I was actually going to suggest is that this, I feel like this conversation, what we're being asked to vote on tonight is actually the PIF expenditure plan, and so I think this conversation can continue. I think it, I would, it feels like it's gone far enough, so now there's like some issues identified, and, which is good. But I'm going to ask that we go to Commissioner, oh, sorry, President Matomadi, and then move to a vote, if that's okay?
That, that's great by me, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to staff and the fiscal advisors for getting us to this point with the, with the budget, and the hard work is yet to come to operationalize what we're approving tonight. And I recognize that there has been an enormous lift internally to address position control, school site staffing, and so forth. So I'm, and I really thank you to Commissioner Lamb for the work in the ad hoc committee to getting us to this place, so that we are in a position to vote on a budget that we have been told by our fiscal advisors is acceptable, you know, and also contingent on the passage of the resolution. So thank you for that work. And I just want to say, like, our school sites and our families and our educators don't really care what the funding sources are, they want to know what, what they're experiencing at their school sites. So from my perspective, it's overdue for PIF and other funding sources to be considered together as part of an integrated planning and budgeting process, and also alignment with our goals and guardrails. We, you know, we, to treat those as silos is not effective, and we've demonstrated that it's not effective. So I want to appreciate the responsiveness of the superintendent, given our last conversations. And I just want to say also that effective use of our resources is always important to us, and it's especially true now. As Commissioner Lamb indicated, this is not just a SFUSD effort to look at impact of funding sources, the city is doing the same. And I do want to underscore her comments that there is increasing interest in understanding the impact of the PIF funds on student outcomes at the Board of Supervisors. So it's incumbent on us to be responsive and thoughtful always, but especially given our, our own context here in the district, as well as what is happening in the city around us. So thank you to the superintendent for his, his responsiveness on, you know, after the discussion that we had just two weeks ago. And so yes, this is a decision point, we already had an opportunity to discuss these items in greater depth a couple of weeks ago, and so I am ready to move to vote. We can't, I, I can't hear anything. Can, can others? I see interpretation is interpreting when I speak, but the, we can't hear whatever's happening in the room.
Okay.
Yeah, and we can't hear you on, on, interpretation can't hear what's happening in the room. Yes, we're good now. Yes, and I can see interpretation is good too. Yeah.
Great. Okay, so we are going to, President Matomadi, there was a vote to extend the meeting. Your vote was not recorded. Would you, can she vote on that item? I don't know how we do.
Oh, it's okay, that's fine.
Okay, fine. All right, so we're going to vote now on action item G1, 246-25SP1, the SFUSD fiscal stabilization plan.
Thank you. Was there a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to President Matomadi's comment about how we've discussed all of this related to PIF in the last meeting. I just went back into the June 11th agenda items, just to make sure I didn't miss anything. The memo about.
No, we didn't discuss, Commissioner Fisher, we did not discuss the memo.
Right, that's, I just wanted to point that out, like, this is new, this is.
Yeah, and then, and the superintendent has made it clear that it's new, and that is in response to that conversation, and he's going to have further conversation.
Is, so then I will go back to my original clarifying question. Are we voting, is this recommendation part of what we're voting on in this action item? That's what I need to, before we vote, I need clarity, 100% clarity on that.
Item.
So the memo is a recommendation, though, to move the PIF CAC under the LCAP task force, so are we voting to do that tonight? That's why I'm asking for clarification.
Yeah, so two things. One, it, this is, and, these are operational issues, that's why, I think I said that in the memo, so that's why I'm not asking for action. And two, just to clarify, it's not saying that PIF CAC is moving under the LCAP. How we're organizing PIF is, we want PIF CAC representation on the LCAP advisory committee, and then we're going to work with PIF CAC on the roles and responsibilities.
So, and to be really clear, the vote is on?
The PIF expenditure.
The PIF expenditure plan, the memo is an informational item that is attached to that, correct?
That, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
Is that, that's correct?
Yes.
Great, so we're not voting on that now, though. We're voting on item G1, 246-25SP1, the SFUSD fiscal stabilization plan.
Thank you. Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
Vice President Alexander?
Yes.
President Matomadi?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Okay, now, thank you, we're going to now vote on G2, 246-25SP2, the 24, 2024 to 2027 local control and accountability plan for the San Francisco County Office of Education and the San Francisco Unified School District.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
Vice President Alexander?
Yes.
President Matomadi?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. Now, we're going to vote on item G3, 246-25SP3, superintendent's proposal for the fiscal year 2024-25 recommended budget.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
Vice President Alexander?
Yes.
President Matomadi?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. Now, we're going to vote on item G4, 246-25SP4, expenditure plan for fiscal year 2024-25 education protection account.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
Vice President Alexander?
Yes.
President Matomadi?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. Now, we're going to vote on item G5, 246-11SP5, superintendent's report, superintendent's proposal, excuse me, approval of the Public Education Enrichment Fund expenditure plan for school year 2024-25, which again, is a vote on the plan, expenditure plan, the memo itself is an informational item that is related, but we're not voting on that.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
Vice President Alexander?
Yes.
President Matomadi?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move to item G6, which is 246-25SP5, tentative agreement between United Educators of San Francisco, UESF, regarding reopener successor agreement and AB 1200 disclosures. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Superintendent Wayne, is there a, does this need to be read into the record? This is item six, right? Ms. Baer can just briefly explain.
So the next three items are tentative agreements and AB 1200 disclosures with three of our bargaining units. The one that we're on now is the district and UESF participated in a special education work group and reached agreement on five tentative areas. There are a job study for nurses and social workers, a group to review class size and caseload numbers, early childhood staffing, classified training and supervision, and equitable caseload and workload. And this concludes our bargaining with UESF through the 2425 school year.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I would just like to really appreciate all the work that's been done here. You know, there's a lot of work that went into this after all the other negotiations had closed, so thank you very much. And I really appreciate the reflection of not just caseloads, but workload that goes into some of the, the SPED agreements as well. And I think that this is definitely for the betterment of our students receiving special education services. So thank you.
Okay, we'll move to a roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
Vice President Alexander?
Yes.
President Matomadi?
Yes.
Six eyes.
Thank you. Now, we'll move to item G7, 246-25SP6, tentative agreement between International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, IBW, regarding reopener successor agreement and AB 1200 disclosures. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you. Superintendent or Ms. Baer?
So this item provides salary increases for the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers effective July 1st of '24 and July 1st of '25, and the financial information is included in the AB 1200 disclosure.
And so these are also, we, you know, in, we've been engaged in negotiations for, with them and for Common Crafts, I think literally for years. I mean, it's been a while since, since we've reached agreement, but that, you know, started prior to the fiscal oversight. Do want to appreciate RCD partners did review this in advance as well, and that's what will need to happen for any further negotiated agreement, that they'll need to know, they'll need to review it in, in advance, and, you know, we're, we're going to need to do some work before we're in a position again to actually negotiate agreements like this.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the board? All right, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
President Matomadi?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. Let's move to item G8, 246-25SP7, tentative agreement between Common Crafts regarding reopener successor agreement and AB 1200 disclosures. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Superintendent, Ms. Baer?
So the last item is the agreement with Common Crafts. It provides a salary increase retroactive to July 1st of '23, and another increase on July 1st of '24. And again, the financial information is included in the AB 1200 disclosure.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? If not, we will go to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
Vice President Alexander?
Yes.
President Matomadi?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. Okay, now we're on to item H, the consent calendar. Are there, is there a motion, can I get a motion and a second, please, in the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any items withdrawn or corrected by the superintendent? No, thank you. Let's do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
Vice President Alexander?
Yes.
President Matomadi?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
All right, moving on to item I, I1, reports from board delegates to membership organizations. Are there any? If not, we will move on to item I2, any other reports by board members? If not, we will move on to item I3, any other advisory committee appointments? And if not, we will move to adjournment, and this meeting is adjourned at 10:15 PM.